Good evening, Greg.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good evening. Good evening, please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to those in the audience and those viewing us at home. Item three on the agenda, 7:05, meeting with Reading Municipal Light Representatives regarding the tree trimming program. Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Sullivan, Reading Municipal Light Department.
Whatever you all more comfortable with.
Actually, right there so the people at home can hear you.
Great.
Does that? That's great.
Absolutely.
Yep, thank you.
Are these from the trees you trimmed?
I can't promise that. I just would like to thank the Selectmen for inviting me here to explain the tree trimming initiative of the RMLD to the board and also to the customers that we have here in North Redding. What I have handed out is our tree trimming initiative along with a doorknob hanger. It's actually a two-part doorknob hanger. There's a carb in there, so...
You just ripped it off.
Yeah, yeah. You just ripped it off. That's okay.
That's a cheer, by the way.
The purpose of that is one goes to the office and one goes to the customer. This way, it completes the feedback loop for us out there in the field.
It's the same thing, so...
That's okay. Plenty of those where they came from. Subsequent to Hurricane Sandy and the October 2011 snowstorm, I'm sure everybody here remembers those two storms, the RMLD began to plan for a tree pruning initiative in July of this year. And we actually got a, we obtained a third tree crew. Once we got that third tree crew, what we began to do is split up a tree crew, put a tree crew in the town of Reading, put a tree crew eventually in the town of North Reading. We have started in North Reading as of September after meeting with Mike Sorgen and Dick Carnavale and explaining what we'd like to do. We've worked all the way up Hayville Street, all the way to the end, and the guys are currently on Marblehead Road. Our concentration is going to be wherever we have three phases in the town initially, and then after that, it'll be single phase beyond. So, you know, this initiative won't take place and be completed over the course of one year. We have responsibility for pruning in the maintenance space or the trim corridor between pole to pole for both primary and secondary wires. That is the purpose of this tree trimming initiative, to trim pole to pole, not necessarily to each one of the residence houses, but pole to pole along those lines. We understand there's a balance that needs to be maintained between aesthetics and the distribution of electricity. We'd like to obtain that balance, whereas in the past, we've had some outages that are a little longer than we would have liked due to the, due to the trees. We hope that this initiative will bring us into that zone. I have with me tonight Guy Shepherd. Guy is the Principal for Professional Environmental Services. He's an arborist. He's worked with the RMLD, also with the town of Reading, as I understand it. He's produced a growth survey for the RMLD along with a tree hazard document. What that growth survey will do for us is to help maintain a three-year minimum cycle, and in this way, we'll be able to plan for when we're going to come back to where we have begun as of this past year. Where customer-owned trees are impacted, our plan is to work with the customers. You can see on the two-part form, there's three different boxes. One indicates that we plan to trim in a certain area. The tree trimming crew will go out there, they'll tie a ribbon around the tree, and this way, the customer can visually identify which tree needs to be trimmed around the power lines. The two other boxes are for communication before we do cut any of those trees, and that's indicated on those forms. The tree crews will go out there, they'll understand that a little more invasive work needs to be done, they'll identify with the customer that it's okay to do that work, and then complete that work. So, it becomes a big feedback loop, and the RMLD is really trying to do the right thing here for all four towns.
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. So, if we have a tree that's actually on private property and impacts the wires, you're going to be identifying them, and some of them are of concern as opposed to you're going to have to trim it. Any cost to the homeowner or what?
No cost to the homeowner.
Okay.
No cost.
So that if, again, if you've got a tree that's, good-sized tree, but knocking over the thing, and it's private property, you are going to just...
We leave that form on the customer's door. We identify what we'd like to do, you know, like I said again, visually with a ribbon, tie a ribbon around the tree as the song goes. And this way, the customer can call in and say, "Hey, I have a problem with that. Can we talk a little more?"
If you don't hear from them, you're going to assume it's okay?
That's right. There is, it depends on which box is checked. There are, there's a total of three boxes there that the customers can expect once these are hung on their doors. If the top box is hung and we don't hear from the customer within two business days, we'll trim the tree. If we have to remove something severe or become invasive with the tree, we'd like to have a discussion with the homeowner and say, you know, "This is diseased," or "There's a problem here, and can we get your approval to do such?" So, we want to hear that verbally. We want to go out there and talk to those customers.
Is there a timeline on those, though?
No.
So, if you don't hear, you're not going to do it until you talk to them?
That's right. There's only, there's only one place on that form that indicates within two business days we'll be trimming.
Okay.
So, in the case where it's a tree that has to come down because it's diseased or it's a danger, the consultant's making that determination?
Actually, actually, only in rare cases will a consultant make that determination. If, if we know the tree is diseased, if it can be pointed out, usually it can, sometimes it can't, but if it can be pointed out that the tree's diseased and the crew needs to take it down because it's in danger of, of the distribution of electricity, we'll go out there and talk with the, with the homeowner. If they say, "I think the tree's fine," that's when the consultant will come out and say, "All right, you know, here's the reasons why this has to be done."
And do you, does RMLD offer any, if you have to take a tree down that's not diseased but it's impeding the distribution of electricity, you guys have any, offer anything to the homeowner in a replacement of a tree?
No, that, that won't need to be done. We won't need to take a tree down.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if the tree is diseased and it's...
You're doing them a favor.
Exactly. You know, sooner or later, it's coming down.
Right.
We'd like to take it down on everyone's terms as opposed to, you know, in the middle of the night during a storm, electricity gets knocked out. And again, we're only dealing with the, the trees that could impact the wires, you know. That's the way we're looking at this. So, it's in the maintenance corridor.
And just as far as, from an aesthetic standpoint, you know, where there are lower branches which aren't going to necessarily impact the wires, so you're going to take the higher branches off, from an aesthetic standpoint, you're going to have a funny-looking tree. We work with the homeowners and maybe trim the lower branches off so that aesthetically it looks a little bit better?
Actually, what...
Or just not touching...
Good point. What we've decided here is we've run up against this situation, and it's actually the, the branches on the higher part of the tree that are of more concern, so...
Right.
You know, we'll look at it from the standpoint that if you're driving down the block, what is that tree going to look like to customers, to people, other folks who live on that street? And if need be, we'll leave the lower branches.
Well, someone may want to take it off because it's going to look strange.
Well, these are professional tree crews. This is, you know, this company is Asplint. They're, they're nationwide, and they've done all of our work for, I would say, upwards of over 15 years now. I mean, our guys, our RMLD folks are trained in tree trimming, but they're not, they're not tree trimmers. These guys do line clearance every day. They're the best.
But again, as far from an aesthetic standpoint, what you think looks okay may not look good to the homeowner or the adjoining neighbors.
Very true.
How does that...
Very true. Well, we're trying to...
How does that come into play if a homeowner's home and said, "Okay, we'll see you on Tuesday. You've got to come and trim it up." That's fine, and then you look and go, "What the heck? You've got these two lower branches, the only thing hanging out now. It looks kind of silly. How about trimming them back?"
No problem.
You know?
No problem. You know, we'll, we'll try and err on the side of caution and not take too much, but if the, if the customers like, I'd like those taken off, that's not an issue.
Because I know you've started the initiative already, and by the way, I'd like to applaud the effort because I think it's, Reading Municipal Light has done a great job over the years, but they're doing a better job now as far as proactive approach in relation to the tree trimming initiative here. But I am aware of some homeowners already who, you know, were told that we can't do this now, you know, we can't do it.
Meaning, we've done some trimming on their trees and we can't do this?
We can't, we can't, you know, trim another one here, another one there because it's a little lower hanging and it's...
Another branch on the same tree?
Yeah. So, you might want to communicate with the crews that that's okay to...
That'll be done.
To undertake that.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be done. I mean, if the tree doesn't look right, Guy, am I overstepping my bounds in talking technically here? If the tree doesn't look right regarding lower branches...
Yeah, I think there's a certain amount you have to, I mean, when you start talking aesthetics and what private tree companies do, this is a utility trimming, so basically, if it's one branch and it's not going to be a big thing, it's fine, but if you're going to end up, you know, aesthetically trimming all the trees in town, you know, you can't...
No, no, I'm not talking about, you know, going through and pruning the entire town, but I'm just, you know, saying this particular tree aesthetically makes sense or doesn't look right, how about taking it off and try to...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's an issue. I'd be concerned with taking too much.
Yeah. But I just want to make it with it, I'm aware thus far, one or two situations where people say, "Well, what about, you know, we can't do that, maybe after hours, we can't do it now, you know, talk to us later." That's different, you know, it wasn't much, but...
Well, see, that's the point. If it's not much, then it should be done.
Okay.
That's, that, I mean, that's, that's my point.
It isn't much.
Yeah, and all these guys work for me, so...
Yeah. So, you might just want to make them aware that it isn't much, that's okay.
I got the point.
Good, thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming.
I want to apologize, you know, I had a last-minute meeting where I couldn't make it the last meeting. I guess I was the quorum. Mr. Frisco, Mr. Fodi had already notified the chairman they weren't going to be here, and that afternoon it was like, you know, I have a 5:00 meeting...
That's okay.
A 4:00 meeting.
Things happen.
I was glad John Norton was able to get in touch before you made the...
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Not, not, yeah, thank you, thank you all.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you for the evidence. Great understanding.
If anybody in the crowd wants to see what he handed out, I'd be happy to hand it to you.
Mr. Valueconus, I don't know if I've seen the collector or the finance director?
I am standing in for both.
Okay, very good.
So I can address the bands.
Thank you. All right, so item four, signing of the bands.
Take one, please, and pass it along. The bands are, the total amount is $1,124,540. And you see on page one, the notes and the approvals from the June of 2013 town meeting and the October 1st, 2012 town meeting. They're broken into two different components. One of them is for the Enterprise Fund operations, which is considered to be profit-making, and that would be the improvements at the Hillview for $80,000. The other items that are shown here is being tax-exempt. The remaining items totaling $1,044,540. So, what we typically do is we go out and we borrow temporarily. We put the borrowing up bid, and in this case, we received two notes, and we're prepared to come forward with a recommendation that the board award. The $80,000 bond anticipation note is the interest rate of .9% to Century Subsidiary Investments LLC, and then furthermore, the balance of $1,044,540 be awarded to TD Securities USA LLC at an interest rate of 1.0%. And I would ask that the, once the board has completed its discussions, that the clerk read the fairly lengthy vote of the board, which is a recommendation of bond council. And then I have the notes for you to sign.
Questions, board members? Mr. Valueconus?
Greg, on these interest rates, how do I compare it to the last round? Do you recall?
Yeah, we've always been about 1%.
So, it hasn't changed, hasn't changed up or down?
1% on the bands is right where we've been the last time that we've gone out. Needless to say, it's a very favorable and attractive rate for us.
Yes, I do. Mr. Chair, I, the clerk of the board of selectmen of the town of North Reading, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board held November 4th, 2013, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which...
I think we need the motions first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, go to the motions first and then certify that.
It's not here, it's not here.
No, it's still like the motion that he was reading.
I thought we had to vote these two first.
That's right, yeah, it's right here. You want to show all my...
See these two here? Yes.
That one?
Yeah, it's number four.
Yes, I do. Vote those first.
I thought, same, but they weren't in the packet. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of $1,044,540 bond anticipation notes at a rate of .4535% dated November 8th, 2013, and due November 20, I'm sorry, November 7th, 2014 payable to TD Securities.
I'm confused.
That's not, that's not, that's not what's on the vote of the board of selectmen.
Right. It's different.
It is.
The correct vote of the board is the lengthy motion that the board has before it and does state the amounts and the interest rates that are on the bonds.
But, but this is certifying the votes that were taken. So, the votes have to be taken first.
After the fact, so...
Talks about prior votes.
All right. How about if we, each one of these, each one of these should be a motion?
That's correct.
So, I have to take a vote?
I just have a question before we get there. How do we know which interest rate is correct?
The interest rate that is on the long blue sheet is correct.
But my question is, how do we know that?
Oh, it's actually on the notes that have been prepared. When you sign the notes this evening, they'll specify the .90% and the 1.0%, you actually signed the notes this evening.
These don't have the interest rates in it?
Yes, they do.
I'm sorry.
Where's that 4.35?
In here, it's not in here.
No, no, see it, see it.
I didn't see it there. It's not.
This one here. Oops, it's 435.
No, it's the, the interest rates that are in the big motion are the correct ones.
Yep, I don't see this .435 in this picture, but I don't know where that came from, Steve.
But the problem, Mr. Valueconus, is if you look at the large thing, it says, we are present, the following votes were unanimously passed, so previous to this.
Right.
So, we have to read the motions that are in our meeting packet except we change the rates that are in the meeting packet. Or I could just read these as motions, right? Each of these...
It doesn't have the 1%.
Well, I'm real, okay, if we go to, in the meeting packet, the memo we received from our finance director, she's talking about here, and we see four bids on the bands for $1,044,540.
Right.
The TD Security interest rate is 0.535.
Each of these are separate motions.
Yep. This long vote of the board indicates the interest rate is 1%.
Mr. Chairman, I move to look at the same thing here.
I don't...
Yeah, you're right.
I think, Mr. Chairman?
So, I would just take this, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten-eight, ten-nine, ten-ten, ten-one, ten-two, ten-three, ten-four, ten-five, ten-six, ten-seven, ten eight, ten nine, zero percent. People's United Bank, 0.6400 percent. Century Bank, 0.6500 percent. So, it looks like the motion contained in our meeting packet is accurate in terms of the percent of these bands, but it's incorrect in terms of the long-form vote of the board of selectmen that we handed this evening.
One is to approve the, you know, accept the bid from the specific bidder, right?
But it has the incorrect interest rates.
That's the problem. The interest rate here, it says, it says wrong.
Unless, maybe this is the expression, maybe the premium, once you add the premium of $5,692.74, that would increase that rate to 1%?
Yeah, one million, you know that.
I don't know. I mean, it doesn't seem like that would make sense given that the premium is only $5,000.
Yeah, I see.
Do these have to be signed this evening, Mr. Valueconus?
Yes, they do.
I'm not in a position to do so.
Fine, I'll ask the finance director to be present.
I mean, there's, there's, there's a difference in interest rate of at least a half, half a percent.
You refer to the breakdown sheet. It indicates that there's a weighted net interest cost which takes into account the prorated premium and the prorated interest, and as a result of that, and you'll note that that is what the, brings down the rate from 1% to the amount that was stated by the board, the .45%. So, it's as a result of the fact that the town receives a premium and a prorated interest amount, which then drives down the effective rate of the bond. So, what happens is you sign notes that indicate the 1% amount on this particular item, and as a result of the premium that we receive, we apply that premium toward the loan, toward the payback, and that effectively drives the interest rate down to the amounts that are shown on the sheet you have before you.
All right, so when it says, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just...
Mr. First question.
So, when it says the weighted average net interest cost is 0.4535%, you're saying when it's all gross total, it's 1%?
Yes, exactly, when you...
But there's nothing in this meeting packet I can find that says that.
No, but I remember the last time that the board had bands, the same question came up, and the response was is the fact that the town receives a premium, that premium is applied to the interest that's due, and that's what drives down the interest rate.
Greg, then the question has to be asked because if you go back and you read, for the $80,000, it says the weighted average net interest cost is 0.9000%, then that, that same logic would have to apply to that, right?
All right, if you look at the detail, the first cell's listing shows an interest rate of 1%, premium 589274, net interest rate vendors 4723, it shows a premium, so it's at the .4535. I think if we, Mr. Fodi just takes each one of these things and turns them into a motion, will be covered and we can sign them tonight.
And then read the whole thing at the end, afternoon?
And then read it again.
We have the wrong rates.
No, it's got the, it's actually got the right rate. If you look at the detail, on the southwest detail here, page, I don't know what page it is on that.
Page 23.
Yep. It gives you the TD Securities principal amount, $1,044,540. Coupon rate is 1%. The interest would be $10,416.09. Net interest less the premium, the prorated premium is the 56, which is what's referenced here in the motion, or what we would have voted, is the, it matches as far as the premium. So, that, I believe, if we take what's on the blue sheet here, turn them into motions, will be covered and will be done. Does, doesn't that help?
And there is no premium associated with the $80,000.
With the $80,000, so...
That's why the rate doesn't change.
I'm sorry, will you answer the question on the 90, on the .0?
Yeah, there is no premium associated with that one.
There's no premium.
Right. And that's why it's exactly as you stated, Michael.
So, that one's okay, that one's okay. This is just, just keeping, this is okay. So, yeah, keep following the motion. Want to do it?
I will.
All right, Mr. Chairman, ready to do it?
I'm ready for the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of an $80,000.9% general obligation bond anticipation note, Series A taxable, the Series A note of the town dated November 8th, 2013, and payable November 7th, 2014 to the Century Subsidiary Investments LLC at par or accrued interest, if any.
Second. The motion is second. Any further discussion? There is none. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sale of a $1,044,540 1% general obligation bond anticipation note, Series B. The Series B note together with the Series A note, the notes of the town dated November 8th, 2013, payable November 7th, 2014 to TD Securities USA LLC at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $5,692.74.
Second. The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Chair votes no, 4-1. Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. All right, we'll just have to modify what...
Correct.
What's on here, okay.
Mr. Chair, I motion to, that in connection with the marketing and seals of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of seal and preliminary official statement dated October 22nd, 2013, and a final official statement dated October 30th, 2013, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, being hit by ratified, are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be be and hereby authorized to execute and deliver significant events, disclosure undertaken in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, with which undertakers shall be incorporated by references in the notes for the benefits of the holders of the notes from time to time.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the taxable status of the Series B note.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and such all actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so those are the votes here, with the following votes, with the exception of vote number two, 4-1. We're passing unanimously. With the exception of vote number two.
Of vote number two. 4-1. We're passing unanimously.
4-1 favorably. 4-1 favorably.
Mr. Chairman, I, the clerk of the board of selectmen of the town of North Reading, Massachusetts, certified that a meeting of the board held November 4th, 2013, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were, with the exception of vote number two, passed 4-1 favorably, unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted to approve the sale of $80,000.9% general obligation bond, anticipation note, Series A, taxable, the Series A note of the town dated November 8th, 2013, and payable November 7th, 2014 to Century Subsidiaries Investments LLC at par accrued interest, if any. Further voted to approve the sale of a $1,44,540 $1% general obligation bond, anticipation note, Series B, of the town dated November 8th, 2013, payable November 7th, 2014 to TD Securities USA LLC at par accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of $5,692.74. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of notice of sale of preliminary official statement dated October 22nd, 2013, and a final official statement dated October 30th, 2013, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted the town, that the town treasurer and the board of selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver significant events, disclosure, undertakings, and compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertakers shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the taxable status of the Series B note. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which addenda included the adoption of the votes, was filed by the town clerk, and a copy there posted in a manner conspicuously, I'm sorry, conspicuously visible to the public at all hours on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, are, if applicable, in accordance with the alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by Attorney General set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays and Sundays and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the notes were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general laws, chapter 38, sections 18 to 25 as amended, dated November 4th, 2013. Did you get all that, Paul?
Nice job, Mr. Paul.
Quote me. Moving to item five, which is. Moving to our item five of the agenda, 7:30 PM public hearing, Gatherings Inc., DBA, the Center Cafe, application for a wine and malt beverage license. Clerk can read these public hearing notice. Ladies and gentlemen, I know that a lot of you are here for this particular license applicant this evening, or a bonus there, too. We're going to hear from the applicants, we'll hear from town officials that are here this evening, and then any one from the public that wishes to speak will have an opportunity to speak. The grounds are the following. Raise your hand. I'll call upon you, come up to the podium, come to the podium, announce your name, your address, speak when you're on behalf or opposed to the application. If you do not wish to hear any speaking out from the audience, the only time you can speak out is when you've been recognized by the chair to come to the podium. I'd like to conduct this hearing in a cordial and as friendly as possible sort of environment. You will be asked to leave if you speak out from your chair or act out. We have police officers here this evening, so I'm sure, given that all and most of you are North Reading residents, if you're standing, you can remain standing. Sure. Very good point. That's, I'll, I'll explain what I mean by no acting out from your chair. I would agree with you, sir. No cheering, no applauding, no booing, no comments from the chair. As I said, you will be asked to leave the hearing, so, and I'm sure, given that most of, if not all, you are North Reading residents, you'll conduct yourselves supporting. Thank you. Mr. Fodi, do you have the public hearing notice, please? This was continued, and you, most of you are aware, we got to continue this due to lack of a quorum at our last meeting up here.
It's on the packet, Mr. Chair, just give me a second, I'll pull it up. It's in the last.
Thank you. Steve Beecher. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Notice of public hearing, note that it was rescheduled to November 4th, 2013 at 7:00 PM. In accordance with chapter 138 of the Massachusetts general laws, a public hearing will be held by the board of selectmen in room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, on Monday, October 21st, 2013, at 7:10 PM, on the application of Gatherings Inc., DBA, the Center Cafe for a Carmavidula Wine and Malt Beverage License. License is to be exercised at 118 Park Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, in a self-standing 1,500-square-foot building with a full basement, two handicap bathrooms, dining room, bar, café area, and kitchen with 63 seats. Thank you, Steve.
Fodi? Public hearing is now open. I'd like to hear from the applicants.
Good evening.
It's a welcome by menu. You guys have the share line.
Thank you. My name is Paul Del Greco, this is my wife Sandy. We own the Center Cafe in North Reading, and we're here to apply for a wine and malt beverage license. Just a quick background, some of you don't know us, some of you do. The restaurant's been there for 19 years. About seven years ago, we took ownership of it. We've made many improvements to the property, inside and out. And now that we're, we're asking that the next step be taken.
Anything else you ask? Like to add, those issues when you were here about four years ago.
Yeah, there were, there were some issues a few years back when we, when we were here. Some of which I think were mostly speculation and what-ifs and bad intersection and things like that, and things that we have seen, one of the things was, if we were to get really busy, what's going to happen to the neighborhood and the traffic patterns and the parking and everything else. Well, I'm happy to announce that our business is up between 35 and 40% since the last night we found the board. And since then, and before our last meeting in front of the board, there's still no accidents at the corner of Park in Washington. There is no problem with parking, and there is no problem with traffic.
What, members have any questions? Mr. and Mrs. Del Greco?
Not just Mike, just for the police department's recommendation and input.
Mr. Masari?
Just, you're open mornings and for lunch, and currently not in the evening?
Not in the evenings. We were, about a year and a half ago, we were open for six months in the evenings.
But right now, you're not.
Right now, we're not, no. Those menus that you see.
What's your intent, given that you get a beer and wine license?
Well, those of you who haven't been in the restaurant, it's a, it's a family-style venue, where you come in with your kids before, after soccer, or any of those sporting events in town, and enjoy a meal, and that's where it's going to stay. We're just going to offer dinner, and you're able to get a beer or wine with the meal. Being without the beer and wine would be quite a disadvantage in town, opposed to all the rest of the restaurants, and it would make a world of difference to our business, provided that we're able to get it.
Mr. Prisco?
You said, you said the restaurant's been there for 19 years?
It has.
Has it ever been a dinner over the 19 years, except for the six months?
Uh, it was, it was three meals. In fact, I believe in the 80s, in the 80s to 90s.
For how long of a period?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure on that. The person that owns the property had it as a full restaurant, and it was open for three meals around the clock. And he always did, he did well with the contracts and stuff when they were building up in the McIntyre area and things like that.
Do you intend to have a standalone, what we know as a bar, where people just come in and order?
Absolutely not. Our business is, is 70 to 80% food right now. I realize with the price of the alcohol, the ticket item is going to go up a little bit, but we plan to have the same ratio of food to beverage costs. I, I don't see a big increase in that. It's not that type of venue. We don't want that there. All it is, is a restaurant. If you look at our restaurant, it is 70% dining room, hot café, bar area, seats only seven, and it's three tables, one television. There's no.
Would you, if granted the license, what are your, what's your intent in terms of your hours of operation in the evening?
Uh, we would probably be closing at 10 o'clock.
Probably, probably.
Well, yeah, I don't want to stay up later than that. I have to be in there at 5:30 in the morning.
So closing at 10, so you'd say it would be last meal at 9:30?
9:30.
Mr. Prisco?
I apologize, we have this wonderful report on, but it won't open, so I'm not sure anybody else has a problem. How many seats in total again?
63.
63. It was all in here, so I apologize for asking questions. You already provided the information on 63, and that includes the bar?
It does.
The dining room.
On a Saturday or Sunday, how many, how many times you turn over those tables in the dining room?
You know more than me, probably three, at least three to four times.
At least four, five to six.
Okay, so how many, how many people do you think you serve on a Sunday or Saturday or Sunday morning?
We probably do anywhere from 225 covers to 275.
What would you anticipate? You must have done some research in terms of.
We don't anticipate turning the tables.
What do you do? If granted that this license, then you just have some research you've done in terms of what you anticipate in terms of how many.
I'm going to say two, no more than four.
That would, that would be a Friday or a Saturday, not, not a weekday. A weekday, I'd be happy just to fill up one time and to do one service. You know, and again, it's not, being open for dinner isn't like what people around the neighborhood see on the weekends. On the weekends, you get out of church, and I think everybody calls everybody else in town and says, let's all go to the Center Cafe now, and they all show up at the same time. It's not going to be that way on, on, for dinner, for dinner service. People come out of work, take a shower, they're going to come in sporadically, they're not going to all show up at the same time. They'll be in, they'll be out, there'll be a nice flow.
Do you want to board at this point?
The industries are covered, so if they're all being put.
Okay. I know the police department is here, they've done a report. Unfortunately, I got it today, so I haven't seen it yet, but this time, do you have anything else to add at this point?
I don't, just if I have the opportunity to, uh.
You will.
To come back up.
Come back up?
Yes, thank you.
Function and then whatever key it is on the computer.
It's still boot up.
It is still warming up.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you, board members. What I want to do is I want to introduce some of the history associated with this license, so I'm going to do a presentation on that, and then turn it over to Chief Murphy, who'll be doing the presentation on behalf of the police department. As was indicated earlier, there was a license application that was submitted in 2009, actually two licenses, applications that were submitted in 2009. One was submitted in March, and the second one was submitted in October. March 9th, the board did receive an application. The board did hold a hearing. It was a all alcohol license, which is different than the license that's being submitted this evening, which is only for beer and wine. Nine individuals spoke in favor of the license, 11 spoke opposed to the license, and the board voted unanimously to deny the right license for a number of reasons.
Mr. Value, first, I just, my memory regarding that vote is different.
Well.
I thought it was, you know.
There were two, two votes. The first vote on the all alcohol license was unanimous. The second vote on the wine and malt license was three to two against. So there were two separate votes taken, one in, in April, and the second one was taken in December.
I don't, I don't ever, I thought it was three, two. I know I don't ever remember voting against the license.
Oh, so there was, before you actually went for full look license, then there was a discussion about a malt and wine license?
If I would just refer the board to, I want to dispense with the issue of the questioning of the board vote. There is a copy of the board's minutes in your packet from April 21st, 2009, and if you go through, you'll note that there was a vote that was unanimous, that was recorded 5-0, and I can only tell you that was the minutes that were approved by the board in my exact recollection of what took place on that night.
My recollection of what that vote was concerning, was concerning the reasons why the vote, why the majority of the vote of the board was against the license. I think the ABCC had asked us to spell out the reasons why we had denied it. That came back for an explanation, and we, the board expounded on the reasons why it was denied. I think if there was any vote that was 5-0, was that particular vote, because we were all in agreement as to why the majority did not want, did vote against the license.
First time the matter was before the board, the ABCC acted on the reasons for the denial that are stated in the minutes. There were four that were noted, the first of which is that the recommendation of the police department citing lack of parking, crosswalk obstruction, poor lighting, extensive pedestrian traffic, and other general traffic and safety concerns, along with proximity to multifamily dwelling in residential areas, opposition of the residents, the fact that the establishment would not provide a service that was unique or a product that was different than the other establishments in the community, and then the last reason was at no time had there been a license at that, that location opened past 8:00 PM. Those were the reasons that were submitted to the ABCC. I attended the hearing with town council. The board did not make subsidiary findings at that time. When the license came back before the board in October, November, December of 2009, it was a much more detailed decision that was issued by the board that also reasserted the four reasons for denial that I just stated to you, but also got into many, many more detailed reasons as to why the license was denied. So what I'd like to do is, if you allow me, I'd like to continue with my brief presentation, which indicates that there was a second license application that was submitted. It was submitted on October 8th, 2009. There was a public hearing of the board that was held, and the board voted three to two to deny the license for the reasons that I've already stated to you. The decision was appealed to the ABCC, and the ABCC required the board of selectmen to issue additional supplemental or detailed findings, which was done. In both cases, there was a hearing that was held before the ABCC. Town council did. Town council did attend. My recollection was that a member of the board also attended those hearings, along with a number of neighbors and residents and Mr. and Mrs. Del Greco and other proponents associated with the license. So, there was a hearing that was conducted at the ABCC level, again, on two licenses. The first was an all-alcohol license, and the second was a beer and wine license.
I missed that one, I read it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Police department's review of the site, one-eleven Park Street, the town administrator asked us to do a review of not only current aspects of the application, but the two thousand and nine review that Lieutenant Romeo and Safety Officer Scott Tilton had done. So, we did do that. This presentation is just to give you a safety-related perspective on the application that's before you. Fact is that we did consider more pedestrian safety, lighting conditions, the close proximity to multifamily dwellings and residential neighborhood, lack of certified parking plan conforming to local bylaws, off-site parking issues, and sightline issues. There have been some improvements made since your last application. Additional lighting has been added. Two spotlights were installed to illuminate the front of the building, and the parking area in the south side of the lot has been clearly marked. And also, the parking located at the front of the building is now reconfigured to accept parallel parking as opposed to angle parking. One of the concerns that we have, and I'll, I have an illustration that I'll show you so I can point out a little bit, but is the increased pedestrian motor vehicle traffic in what we consider an already heavily traveled roadway. There's two major intersections, Park Street cutting through to Lindfield and also Route sixty-two, east and west. There's no electronic signal devices to assist with pedestrian traffic, and we do have crosswalks and crosswalk signs, but that's all we do have. And there are some sightline issues which I'll point out as well. One of the, the occupancy for the building is, I was told, sixty-five, and in this area here, where all the parking is, we note there's probably about eighteen spaces marked out for residents and for the business, and that includes employee parking. What we believe is happening, and I think it's been a verbal agreement between the M&amp;H Auto and also Christopher's Market, and I'm not sure if there's an agreement or not, but patrons will utilize both these areas too when there's an overflow. In this particular area here, which I'll show you in a little bit in a couple more slides, you'll see that they installed a rock wall, which has made it a little bit more difficult to access that parking lot in a safe manner. Both areas are not viable long-term alternatives. I'm not sure what the agreement is with Christopher's Market, but I know there's a verbal agreement with M&amp;H Auto from our understanding, and of course, that site could be sold at any time, and that verbal agreement could go with the seller. So, I don't think that that's a long-term viable option either. We do have increased pedestrian traffic, not only from students, but walkers. We have early release days and athletic events where kids, we sometimes see about a hundred kids walking after school from the high school down to Christopher's Market, the Hornet's Nest, and walking home to the residence and the center. And in this area here, where coming eastbound on Park Street, going towards Park Street East towards Lindfield, there's no yield sign, no stop sign, vehicular traffic flows right through, it's thirty miles an hour, and as I'll show you in a couple more slides, there's a sightline issue there as well. There's no certified engineered parking plan, so all these spaces that were painted up by the owner, they're not enforceable by the police department. There is a handicap spot, which I'll show you later, but it's essentially just a bucket with the handicap sign, and it's not certified, it's not really conforming to what the standards And this is where the handicap parking is on the side here. As you can see, these are double parked. I'm not sure how, how they operate the business with double parking, but whether it's just employees that get double parked in, but certainly, you know, the eighteen spaces now are eliminated by four or five spaces right there. They're not really viable spaces to use.
Chief, if I could say anything? So, then eighteen you counted, did you include, how were you counting those doubles? As a single or...
These are, these are actually spaces, they're spaces with lines and then a space ahead of it, so they're actually double spaces with no access to get in.
But in your count of eighteen...
I included those.
You included those.
This is the wall I was speaking of. This one did not exist until this summertime, and as you can see here, if a, if a patron did park in this lot, they would come right after the crosswalk. Now, they have to actually go into the exit of the driveway, there's no access to walk there. You could walk certainly over the guardrail here, but there's no, it doesn't look like there's any access. And on the other side, it's just the same. So, essentially, if somebody did park there, they would have to walk into the exit or on the entrance on the other side, and then use a crosswalk to cross over to the Center I just want to back up. In this area here, residential area, it's clearly one of our other concerns, any type of business that does serve alcohol, we, we do see some quality-of-life property protection issues related to inappropriate behavior, noise complaints, vandalism, public urination, drunk driving. So, we, they'll be one of our concerns with this residential area, and there's another house on this side as well. As I said, I know this is a dark picture, we took this at night. As you can see, this is where I was talking about, the lighting has been improved, at least in the front of this building, but this intersection has not been improved. We did have crosswalk signs installed this past week when we did visit the site, but this is the area on Park Street, as I spoke of earlier, where the red, the motor vehicle traffic just comes right from Park Street heading east into Park Street East towards Lindfield. As you can kind of see here with this fog line, this fog line was moved out to accommodate the, the front of this building. This is not dedicated to their facility. This is just open parking spaces, anybody can park there. In this fog line, you know, by regulations, you have to park within the fog line. But as you can see, the way this fog line goes, it's kicked out a lot here, so if somebody did ride that fog line on, they'd be automatically crossing over here. But our concern, and I'll show you the sightline issue, our concern here is there anybody stepping off the sidewalk, or if these vehicles are backing out, it creates a problem with sightlines.
Chief? Mr. Frisco?
Chief, can we go back to the parking in the front that you just pointed out? Did you say that's parallel parking now, or is it...
Parallel parking, correct. So, you would pull in right here, base...
Right.
So, you could fit probably three cars or four cars now. In the previous application, it was angle parking, but that was eliminated.
Can I ask a question, I would maybe to Mr. Del Greco, that's okay?
I have a question on the, the...
Can you go back to the previous slide, please?
The residential property that's next to it, that's owned by the same owner of the commercial property?
Yes.
And he is in support of the, of your application?
Do you own it as a property? As landlord?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
He actually attended one of the meetings that we...
So, he doesn't have a concern of...
No.
Just want to go back to this, this, I don't have a slide, I thought I had a slide of the sightline. This, this sightline here, where the new bridge was installed, not only is in general, when you stop at, if you have a stop on Park Street trying to take a left and you're facing Christopher's trying to take a left or right, you know, it's, the stop line is, is pretty far back. And you, you know, you have to actually inch out to see this, which is not ideal, but it creates a sightline problem where, where to me increases the danger to the pedestrians. And when we do have inclement weather, you know, the snow banks and everything create even more of a sightline issue. I know Mr. Del Greco talked about accidents, and I do have all the log entries here for you to look at if you'd like, but in two thousand and nine, when, when the police department did their review, they had shown that there were thirty-five accidents that occurred over a thirteen-year period from nineteen ninety-six to two thousand and nine, average of two-point-six-nine per year. For the past four years, we've had eighteen accidents in that intersection, whether it's a hundred yards from Christopher's all the way up into where one-eleven Park Street is. Like I said, I do have the, the log entries here for you to view. So, that averages out to four crashes per year over the last four years. So, it's increased a little bit. We did do a review of it, and it's attributed mostly to bad behavior, inclement weather, and vehicle malfunctions.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
So, in your analysis, how far down Park Street does that extend? And how far...
I have the...
Or Washington Street? And how far down Park Street do you head towards Lindfield?
I have the, have the exact addresses.
Or if you have it broken down to that, at the location of that intersection specifically?
It, well, it is, it's one-fourteen to one-twenty-three Park Street, which is just beyond Gatherings and just before Gatherings on Park Street, and one to four Washington Street, which is not of a significant length of roadway. Very short length of roadways, just before Wright Street and where Christopher's Market. And just want to read my summary. Just after reviewing the factors that were presented to me, I have concerns that if this site were issued an alcohol license, it would be significant negative impact to public safety. I've considered the two thousand and nine police department review, the lack of a certified parking plan, increased pedestrian motor vehicle traffic in an already heavily traveled roadway, lack of electronic signal devices to assist with pedestrian traffic, sightline issues, the overall safety of patrons and residents, and the adverse impact on the quality of life for the neighboring residents contributed to my concerns. I don't answer any questions you have.
What about us? Can I just, I'm a resident, I have to look at nine twenty, for one second? My true time wants to be here. Hi, everybody.
Patricia Neal, ten Wright Street.
How are you?
Very fine, thank you. Committing them for doing as well as they're doing in this recession is awesome, proving the fact that they've increased their businesses, I've said. As I pull out of my room, which is Wright Street to Roosevelt, I love all the kids, there's tons. I mean, I'm crawling, I'm driving stick, I'm in first gear, there are tons. Whether it's after school, midday, I stop, I let them cross, not everyone lets them cross. Not a great place to have liquor. I mean, let's be honest, it just isn't. I see them parking at Christopher's because their business is doing so well, fantastic. Christopher's has a mind, whatever. But having a liquor license and crossing that street, it's a different story. So, I just wanted to say, being from the area, I am concerned of living that close by to having, say, a liquor license in a small place that's doing well for breakfast and lunch. It's a different story when we bring liquor into it. So, I have major concerns, even driving down the street myself, and someone backing up or pulling up, maybe they had a couple too many. The police are going to have to work an awful lot harder. They have enough problems over there, frankly, with Christopher's Market and kids loitering, right? It's just going to add to it. So, as a resident, I don't want it. I really think if they're doing so well, try and get a place on twenty-eight. I'll vote for it. I'm saying that now. I just don't want it around the corner from where I live. I want my value of my home to go up. I don't want it to go down. And I want all these young kids, including my grandkids, that I'm pushing not to be near a place that's serving liquor. So, that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't work too hard. Does any other member of the department wish to speak on any particular issue?
All right.
Members of the public, may I?
Is it time for public comment?
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you. I don't need the microphone.
It's for at home. It's up, it's up for us.
We do need it.
It's for people at home.
Oh, it's for people at home, so I have to talk into this?
They may not need you at home.
All right, they don't need me. All right, thank you very much.
A gentleman from Northham will let us know.
I'm very happy to be here. I don't usually read from notes, but I feel I must. I really don't believe that our community fully...
It's all the rules.
All the rules. Oh, Loretta A. Capazudo, twelve Dwayne Drive, North Reading. Okay. I don't believe our community fully appreciates the little gem that is Center Cafe. First and foremost, it is a small business, something North Reading has always supported and championed. We've always wanted our small businesses to thrive and prosper. We should offer Sandy and Tony Del Greco and Center Cafe no less. I have been part of the Center Cafe family for almost three years. I live here, I teach school here. This is my moonlighting job. I have waited tables, bus tables, cooked, hosted, washed dishes, mopped floors, cleaned bathrooms, prepped food, all to the exacting standards of Sandy and Tony. While they do not own the land, they own Center Cafe, and they wanted to prosper. The Del Grecos have complied with every wish and concern posed by their neighbors and law enforcement over the years. They work hard and are committed to their restaurant, to their neighbors, and to the community at large. Their hearts are huge. Give them a chance to light up that dark little corner with decor that changes with the seasons by Sandy's whimsy and creativity. Give them a chance to compete with the other big eyes in town. Give our little gem a chance. I stand in support to grant Center Cafe this license. Thank you.
May I?
Good evening. Sandy McInerney, one-twenty-eight Park Street. The professional opinion of our police department once again has recommended that you deny the issues of this license, excuse me, deny the issuing of this license due to the many safety issues of this location. I find it hard to believe that, in light of their report, that any one of you men would vote in favor. The location is the same location that was denied a license twice in the recent past and twice upheld by the ABCC. This is not an appropriate location for any nighttime business with its limited parking on a dangerous intersection with very poor sightlines, especially one that is serving alcohol no less. The business appears to be doing very well, noticeably increased in cars on Saturdays and Sundays. The neighborhood put up with the increased congestion and aggravation caused there because of their limited parking, but to add alcohol, additional hours of operation in darkness is very concerning to all with any common sense. It just is not the right location. The tenants at will knew exactly what the limitations were when they chose to move there. On the other hand, the homeowners in the neighborhood never had to deal with anything like this that what the proprietors are proposing. It will cause a quality-of-life issue with increased traffic, noise, and safety concerns for all of us in town. It just does not fit. We are entitled to the peace and enjoyment of our properties that we own, some of us for fifty or sixty years. We bought our homes because of their proximity to the schools, the library, and the historic center. It is the area that has the most foot traffic in town and mostly by our youth. On a Friday afternoon or half-days, there are dozens and dozens of teenagers walking and crossing the streets. Many hang out at Dunkin' Donuts across from Center Cafe, or attending dance classes and karate at some of the other establishments in the plaza. There is also a daycare center straight across from the cafe whose playground is in direct view of Center Cafe, and since no one can smoke inside by law, the patrons would be smoking outside, probably on the picnic table on the corner with the cook, a distraction in itself on busy Route sixty-two. It is also, the license does not promote a common good, a unique need, it is also opposed by many neighbors and other townsfolk. The location has not ever been used before to serve alcohol, and of course, there are many serious safety issues, so please vote no. I have another bit of... The location has not ever been used before to serve alcohol, and of course, there are many serious safety issues. So please vote no. I have another bit of business. One is to ask Mr. Delaney to recuse himself from the vote tonight, since he is a personal friend of the proprietors. In the past, he has promoted and advocated for them, and due to his job, I feel sure you have given them plenty of legal advice and encouragement. So I am asking you to do what is honorable and right thing and recuse yourself from the vote tonight.
I won't, I'll respond. I'm not going to recuse myself.
But that doesn't surprise me, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Fode has recused himself many times from the lost colony because he has a personal relationship there, but you obviously.
Can I respond?
Sure.
You're confusing the issues. Mr. Fode has recused himself for a particular matter because he's related to the applicant, Mr. Patricia Neal. I've got to know Mr. Del Greco since they had taken over Center Cafe, and I would have breakfast there typically with my hockey team when my son was playing hockey. I can't remember the last time I had a meal in Center Cafe, to be quite honest. My kids don't get up on Saturdays and Sunday mornings as early as they used to. So I will not be recusing myself.
Well, you're a personal friend of theirs, so I think you probably should.
I'm a personal friend? I've never, I've never been to their house, they've never been to my house. Not that you need to notice. I've never been out to dinner with them, I've never had a drink with them. I know them as proprietors of Center Cafe. So if you want to create a reason why I should recuse myself, at least the facts should be accurate, and they're not.
And finally, if any of my loved ones, myself or someone I know, get run over, injured, or killed at that intersection due to the issuing of this license, I will personally hold you liable should you vote in favor. Unlike the majority of you on the board, my family has lived here for over 51 years. I love my hometown, and I would sure hate to sue North Redding, but you represent them, and that's, I guess, what would have to happen. It's just a reality today, not a threat. Thank you.
Sir?
My name is David Crisco, I live at 101 Park Street. It's a couple hundred yards from the cafe. To me, the issue has been and is, always has been, parking. All of their spaces all force people to back out onto the street, and the location of the business is right on top of Park Street, as the police chief has identified. So just to elaborate a little bit on what the chief had to say, sightlines from the three directions. If you're coming from Middleton, no problem, clear sightlines. If you're headed west, coming from the east, as the chief had suggested, it's a blind corner, and cars are parallel parked. In front of the restaurant, somebody pops the door open, trouble. I live down on Park Street East, and so if you come from that direction, people speed typically. This is the area of cell phones around them. Not unusual for people to be crossing the center line there. There's a little S curve, you come up a little rise, so that's kind of blind also. Not an issue if, in fact, there was a regular parking lot where people could turn around and come out forward, clearly see what was going on, but it's blind for that reason. Excuse me. Winter, the chief mentioned snow. Hardee's Gas Station, if you look at it, you know, if you've been by there, you know, he has no room to put his snow. So it goes through the street. So that makes that intersection even smaller. He has a sidewalk that runs down, sorry, Park Street East, whatever, 100 feet or something like that. That gets packed with snow because he needs somewhere to put it. I know there are rules in the town that say businesses need to clear their sidewalks. He doesn't, probably out of necessity, not enforced. People are out in the street now, walking, myself included, if they want to go down to Christie's or something like that. So that causes an additional problem in the winter, which isn't their problem, but once again, the location has issues. Lastly, it's impossible to know what impact alcohol in the evening in that place at that location will have. But clearly, it will have some impact, and that will change the traffic patterns and will increase congestion to some degree. Is that a little? Is that a lot? I don't know. I don't know if anybody can tell until it happens, if it does happen. My point is that the burden then becomes, the hardship gets laid on the neighborhood because if, in fact, there is a lot of business, if they turn the tables over two or three times, or four or five times like it is on Saturday or Sunday, that all of a sudden becomes a traffic hazard that wasn't there. It's hard to drive through there on Sunday mornings now. Most people in the neighborhood avoid it just because of the congestion. Add alcohol to the mix, at night, you have a situation where, excuse me, even with a couple of, you know, a beer or whatever, your reaction time's going to be a little slower. Now you're backing out, somebody comes around one of the corners, they can't see what's going on, hazard. And so those are my points. The chief talked about the amount of children that wander through there when school lets out, and that's true. So I urge you all to vote against this because of the parking, because of the traffic hazard. You know, if this was in the strip mall where you can drive out and see, no issue. You know, but that's why the neighborhood has an issue. It's just a bad location. That building is right on Park, in Parking Park, I guess. So those are my points. Thanks.
Excuse me, one second. Do we need that?
I'll do it, I'll take care of it.
All right, sir.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Dallas Kaufman, I live at 24 Haverhill Street, couple of miles, maybe, mile and a half, right at the Redding border. I want to just take it, first of all, I don't have a prepared speech, but whoever that first lady was, I couldn't have touched that. That was really beautiful. I just have some notes. I found Center Cafe after literally years of going around in the neighborhood communities. My business is in Wakefield. I've tried Brothers in Wakefield and a couple of the depot in Wakefield, and then I went out to West Peabody, there's a family restaurant out there. I do a lot of breakfast meetings. And I was always very, very dissatisfied until the day I walked in with the Center Cafe. We've got world-class service, world-class entrepreneurs, an amazing cook, and boy, my darling Lynn and I can really cook, but this guy's a challenge. The food is amazing. If any of you haven't been there, you should go. That being said, I'm a loyal fan, a raving fan of Center Cafe. I'm obviously here urging support. And my hat to our new police chief, who I have to say is here doing his job. I can't imagine a police chief voting in support of an alcohol license pretty much anywhere, so I commend you for that. Parking. I see the parking almost as an insurance policy that solves everyone's problem here tonight. There is not a lot of parking there. And my take on it is, if I were ever to go by at night for dinner and there was no parking, I'd go somewhere else. And I think that this little gem we have here in North Redding, with 63 possible seats, the bar is, it's almost comical, it's like something you'd see on an Archie Bunker show. It's no higher than your table. It's not a traditional bar like you'd see perhaps in the, I'll pick up, I've never been there, but the Great American Tavern up the street. It's a cozy, cute, adorable little restaurant. Wouldn't it be cool to have a place to go for a glass of wine with your dinner? I can't ever see it being a bar. I can't ever see it being a trouble spot. I can't ever believe that these people would put up with that for a second. Let's see. Oh, I'd also like to add, if by some mistake that you deny this license, I think you're putting these two wonderful people at a very unfair competitive disadvantage. Ryers is right down the street, we all know and love Mark Hall. They do wine tastings with a school right across the street. I've been to their wine tastings. The place is mobbed with kids at a wine tasting. The Center Cafe, I don't think you're ever going to see mobbed with people hanging out drinking. They're going to be enjoying good food, and they'd probably like to have a glass of wine or a beer with their dinner. Good luck, I hope you succeed.
Mr. Chairman, gentlemen. Sharon Vera, 7 Wright Street. There's a lot to be said here. A lot of spin said. My biggest concern is safety. I think it's the concern of most of us here because of the school system and the amount of children that fluctuate throughout this area. The parking is a situation, 17 Park and 18 Parking space, there's question on three or four of them, I believe, in reference to whether they're legal or not. I have seen the increase, I'm happy for their increase, but they knew what they were purchasing when they purchased it. It was a breakfast and lunch place. I've only been here since 1994, and I've never known the place to be anything other than a breakfast and lunch place. They can make a very good business there. I am a prior restaurant owner in Boston. I had the opportunity to serve liquor, I chose not to. I don't want the liability of it because liquor does incur different aspects to people when they're under it. The sightline, as stated by our police officer here, is a true one. I believe, as you, as being members of this community, have come off that street numerous times. I literally pull out very slowly to see the sightline from the dip. It's the dip, the smaller cars you cannot see. They go down below the bridge. I have concerns also for a plate glass window that has been broken since our last hearing on this. I believe that is a liability to the patrons of this restaurant and a liability to the pedestrians that walk on the street. The building is as such. It's a sorry thing, it does sit directly on the street. It has no depth. The parking, I have driven out a few times, and they are doing a big business there. The thing I only have a concern about is I have seen double parking alongside of the parallel parking, which now places that vehicle in the center of the road. I don't have any question that they're honorable people. I don't have question that they want to have a good business. But the services they are offering us, I cannot believe that it should take precedent over the safety and the aggrievance that will be placed on the residents within that area. It's a quiet area. Most of, almost every aspect of every business within that area, with the exception of Christopher's, closes by 8:30. I believe it will have an effect on us due to the, like, what was stated here in the smoking aspect. Their proposal under their last hearing was for the smoking to be outside where the picnic table is. I think that's going to be a big problem. I think it's going to be very noisome for the neighbors at 9:30 at night, especially people that go to bed early. I'm an early, I'm an early riser, early to bed. I'm in bed by 8:30. I don't think it'll have as much effect on me. Hopefully not, because the voices do carry within this area because of the woods, and it just carries. I think it was the lack of due diligence that these people had prior to going into the business and not inquiring as to whether or not they were going to propose that to begin with. So I feel it was their due diligence here, not ours, and not this board's. I don't think that we have a call for liquor in the center of our town. It is our community. It is where we hold most of everything that we propose within this town is in that area. And I really do not wish to see alcohol there. I think it'll place an aggrievance on us, and I also think the safety issues are what we really need to weigh here. As the officer said, this town has increased in capacity, the traffic has increased in capacity, and it's not going to get less, it will get more. Once this license is issued, it will be held by the proprietor of that land, it will carry with that. It'll be much harder for us to take anything away if there's significantly something that happens there. I do not wish to stop these people from making any business that they want. I just do not want the consumption of liquor in the center of our community. And that's all I'm asking, gentlemen. And I hope you take that in consideration, and it's my prayer that you will oppose this. Thank you very much.
Mike Correly, 114 Park Street, and I probably live the closest. Never had a problem with the owners. In fact, I think they're good people, but I'm opposed to it. It's just a bad place. When I moved in, the snow was always pushed up to my mailbox. The sidewalk on the other side doesn't exist, kids can't cross. My family's almost been hit many times coming down that hill, and like one of the neighbors said, they're on the wrong side of the road. High speed. And another problem, going out, that new bridge, the cars are below it now. So it made it even worse for the, to see getting out of that intersection, plus with the sun sometimes, it's really bad. And I won't mention any names, but the snow's always pushed on the rental side, I don't know if you know, opposite side of my, the sidewalk does not exist, the kids can't even use the sidewalk. So it's more of a safety issue, and thank you.
Wendell Delena, I live at 98 Park Street. And just like Mike just said, the snow in the winter, it's awful, it's just piled up. And then during the day, it melts, and then it freezes at night. In the morning, you're going, leaving, it's awful. Late at night, it's awful to drive out there. I'm always crawling to have it sanded. There is no sidewalk, the sidewalk is long gone. So, you know, even on the good days, there's no place to walk, you know, to cross. They're doing a great job, they do have great food. I'm really glad you're doing well. I would love to give you the license, but it's just not the right location. You know, it's just too dangerous. It really is. You know, if you're out at night on a Friday, Saturday night, you can see the kids down at the Christopher's hanging around, and then all of a sudden, they'll get, something happens, the cops will go down there, and you know, you've got 20 cars coming down Park Street doing 30, 40 miles an hour. And the cops can attest to this because they're chasing them. Number of times, they pulled the kids over in front of my house for some reason, and it's really dangerous. So you just add alcohol, you know, a couple of glasses, you know, it throws you off your game a little bit. You're pulling out, and one of these kids come flying down, it's, forget it. You know, it's history. You're going to end up with a death, the way these kids drive down the street. They're not open at night, they don't see that. I've been here since 86. I don't remember the place staying past maybe 6 o'clock when it was open for a little while. So they were fed wrong information when they left the place. And I've been in town off and on since I can remember coming up, visiting family and stuff. So, you know, it's always been a nice, quiet town, never any lights. But now we do need lights. That corner really needs to have lights. You can't see, okay? I tell my kids when they're driving out, if they go out that way, to make sure they stop at the stop sign so they don't get a ticket. Then inch forward until you can see, make sure nothing is coming on your left side, because you can't see through that bridge. It's just crazy. I can't walk down there, I've walked down there a couple of times, they don't stop for you in the crosswalk. There's no sidewalk to walk on, I have to walk in the street, which is dangerous because, like Dave said, you're driving down the street, and they just go too fast, like 35, 40 miles an hour. They go 35, 40 miles an hour, easy. And it's just too windy, too narrow. You can talk to the fire department. Just the other day, they came down the street and they were blaring because there was people walking, people walking, there was cars parked out in the street and the horns were blaring. And this was during the day. Don't know, you know, it wasn't their, it wasn't their restaurant, it was before their restaurant. Someone was having some work down at the house, so they had the cars on the street. But it's just a bad intersection, it's just a bad location. And I really don't want you to vote for it. Okay? And I am sorry, you do a great job. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Downs. I guess I'd like to ask the board, what's the purpose of my stating my address?
For the record.
Yeah, but why am I stating it for the record?
To be record, record, everyone that comes gives a public comment.
I guess I'm just questioning, why do you record my address for the record? Is it to prove them a resident or? Just out of curiosity, what the purpose of it is?
Resident, non-resident, and where you live.
Okay. I live at 18 Old Farm Lane, and, which is the other end of Route 62. So it's quite interesting to me to hear about the potential safety of crossing Route 62 at the other end of it. When you look at St. Teresa's, which uses the old Stop &amp; Shop parking lot for its overflow parking, anybody that's walked across, tried to walk across that parking lot in the evenings, you're taking your life in your hands. You can't see the traffic coming in either direction and there certainly are no signals or marking of that sidewalk. But my main reason for coming here and speaking is really on behalf of Sandy and Tony and just really to talk about their character. My wife, my daughter and I have been patrons of the Center Cafe for a number of years now. At one point even had our names on stools, I think. But I would say that Sandy and Tony have created something that's really important to this community. They've created a, you know, maybe to quote cheer is a place that they know your name. It's a very nice community place. You go there, you know people that are there, you see all your other town folks there. So it's a wonderful place to go. They employ the residents of North Reading in their establishment. And I will say that they reached out through the North Reading Special Needs Program and they employ and allow the, not employ, but allow the students in that North Reading Transition Program and North Reading Special Needs Program to have a place to go and work. And there's very few businesses in this community that are open to that program and giving those kids a chance. So I do want to say that, you know, Tony and Sandy's character is the highest. I've been a patron of their facility when they were open in the evenings and it was well past 6 o'clock at night. And I can say I haven't found any, I didn't find any danger or risk to myself or me to others driving in and out of their establishment. I've been there on Sundays at the peak of their business and I haven't seen any congestion or traffic or, you know, anything. And trust me, I'm a, I hate traffic and congestion and certainly if it was, I would avoid the place. Anyhow, it is a wonderful place for my family and myself to go and have food. Hopefully we'll be able to have the opportunity to have dinner and have a beer or wine with our dinner in a nice, family-friendly environment. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Nope, nope, sorry. Lady of the, oh, all right. Lady of the back.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kathy Cushing. I live at 6 Strawberry Lane. And the elect fam, family go in that restaurant, you just feel like you know everybody, the patrons, everybody talks, it's really nice. I have to say that we do frequent often, my grandchildren love it. They love Tony, they love Sandy. But I have never, ever had a problem pulling out of there. And I'm going west on 62, never had a problem. If I go by in the parking, there's too many cars, I just go home and come back later. There's always a time. You're not rushed. The thing that bothers me is that Sandy and Tony are getting the rap for that horrible part of Route 62 where I do take my life in my hands every morning coming out of the Center Plaza since they put the new sign up. When you're turning left coming out, you can't see, the sign blocks it. School buses, who are supposed to be protecting our children, have flown by. And I'm like, where are they going, those poor kids? Who's monitoring how fast the school buses are going? Also, coming out of there with the new wall, the chief was saying how if anyone parks there to go to Sandy's, you have to go around the wall now and go out the entrance or the exit. Where are all these kids who are coming to Christopher Market, where are they walking? They're walking the same way. It's very dangerous for all these children. So I just wanted to bring that point out. If you are coming out of the restaurant off Park Street, I have never had a problem. And I frequented this establishment for a few years. But coming out of Christopher's Market, I even hate to go there now because it's so hard trying to get out from that end. But I just wanted to make that point. Wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Hi, my name is Charlie Douglas. I live at 3 Stone Cleve Road. And I've listened to a lot of the safety concerns. I get why they're being expressed. I guess what I would be really interested in seeing is the police opinion on some of the establishments on Route 28, for instance. If there's a more dangerous sightline than trying to make a left-hand turn out of Horseshoe Grill, which I personally love, I'd like to know what it is. So life carries risk, no doubt about it. I understand why these risks are being stated. That's not a fair reason to deny a license. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Uo, 427 Park Street, here in North Reading. I'm trying to look at what has changed since the last time this issue was brought before the board. And I have to say, it bothers me a little bit to not be in support of a fine establishment because they do have a nice establishment. I haven't been there in a long time, but when I've been there, it was very good, I enjoyed it. And I support businesses, I think businesses should thrive in a town. But I was reviewing all my notes and listening to the presentation by the town administrator, which was 100% correct through its entirety. I listened to the police chief's presentation, that too was consistent with the last report that we had back in, what's it, 2009 or so? It was consistent. So nothing in that regard has changed. And I would assume that the breakfasts and the lunches are still good as well and they serve the need in that regard in the community. Just maybe a fact clarification, I moved here in 1995. When I was here, what was in that location was a flower shop. There was no restaurant there at that time. I moved here August 95, so I believe it was about 96 or so. I ordered flowers there and sent them down to my brother who opened up a restaurant. But the, there's no doubt, law is correct, it's a gem. They do have a nice restaurant, they do support the community, they reach out. So they're a good citizen and that's why it concerns me a little bit to take the stand that I, that I am, that I'm taking. When I was selectman, I did my own report. I went out there at nighttime a couple of times and I watched the traffic, I watched the flow, I looked at the snow piles. I did it before the snow came and after the snow came. And my son did karate at the VCs. And that corner is not a good corner. In the restaurant business, there are three things that are important. Location, location, and location. And as I stated before, if their restaurant was just simply across the street, this would, I don't think these conversations would be going on because they, because they have, they would have the parking. Now, I studied the speeds, I studied, what was most important, two most important things was if you come out of the strip mall, mall, and you want to go straight on park versus make a right on park, you can't. You have to make a right on park and stop and then make a left on park. Okay? So, because you have Washington and, all right? I've heard rubber a number of times when I was there because they have to stop right away. It's not like they go 100 yards and then make a left. They just turn right, stop, and turn left. There's no time for directionals at that point. All right? And I had to ask if the, if, you know, when they built that intersection there, why they didn't make it a straight out of the lot into Park Street? But it wasn't done. And your role here, as I see it, is that you do give licenses and you do promote businesses by the licenses that you give. And that's appropriate. But you're, one of your number one responsibilities is safety. Safety for the entire community. So that when you give out a license of any kind, when the CPC does a review of any kind or the zoning board has to double-check something, they have to look at the safety because that's the role that government plays in the town. It's one of the roles, but that's a very, very important role. I feel bad when we have a good neighbor, such as the Del Greco's, that the location of their restaurant is not suitable for what they want to accomplish. With regard to traffic coming eastbound from the library, I know it's been said before, but it was astounding to me as I stood on the corner of my car to watch a car come and descend towards the bridge. And then you're not able to see it anymore. And that car is usually doing about 35, 40 miles an hour. I think the speed limit when you enter that area is 25 at that point when you hit the bridge, but no one slows down. So when they descend, if I'm coming to that corner and I look and I don't see a car coming and then I look over that way and I don't see a car coming, but that car comes down, gets below the sightline, I look, I will not see that car and I will go out. And that's, that's a disaster waiting to happen. I know there are no reports that reflect that anything happened on that corner, but it's very conceivable at a nighttime environment, and daytime's a different story, but a nighttime environment is a very dangerous environment to be presenting or putting the community The other thing is, when I look at the good aspects of the business, they can increase our tax revenue, so that's good. They increase jobs within the community, that's good. They serve lunches to, and breakfast to, to the business community within that area and of course the residents as well. And they're a family-style residence. Those are the really good things about the restaurant. But they also have a negative impact on real estate taxes on the butters. Because if you run up against that and whether it's them or new owners after that, if they don't take care of their back, their back property, then they have a sight issue and most properties up against a retail establishment such as a restaurant, usually it affects their real estate value. Which means it also affects the selling price of that house that is budding the area because there's possible dumping or polluting. They don't serve a business purpose in the evening because there is no business in the area that is running in the evening except Christopher's and Dunkin' Donuts and they kind of compete in that regard. So if I just put it in a nutshell, it really boils down to a safety decision on your part. What are you exposing the community to on that corner in the winter, more specifically in the winter, in the winter evening hours, adverse weather conditions and so on? So that's a decision that you really have before you and whether you want to expose the community in that regard. I'm glad your business is doing better and I hope it improves even beyond that. Thank you very much.
Forget who was next. Ma'am, move in.
My name is Shane McGrath and I live at 1 Susan Drive, North Reading. And I will freely admit, a frequent customer at the Center Cafe. One of the things I would like the board to consider is they were actually open for about six months in the evening. We appear to have no extra problems during that period of time. They, I have a very hard time accepting the fact that this one business, if you give them a liquor license, will be a problem when you have Ryers and Christie's both selling liquor right in the same area. When you're in a restaurant, your liquor consumption tends to be controlled. I don't know of one restaurant in the state that would allow you more than three drinks at a time. They tend to control correctly how much liquor you have. And I cannot believe, given the character of Sandy and Tony, that they would allow someone to get drunk basically in their establishment. I, I, I'm sorry, I just have a very hard time with this whole thing. I understand the sightlines, I really do and I understand the safety. However, there are other areas of North Reading that equally have sightlines, that equally are dangerous and somehow or other, they just keep going. It's, this corner for some reason seems to be a big problem within the town and I just have a hard time with that, gentlemen. Thank you.
Kathy Newhall, 20 Aspen Road, North Reading. She's right and I, all I hear about is the safety issues, but the safety issues are always there. These guys did serve dinner and the safety issues are still there and all of a sudden they weren't, they weren't a problem then, but now that we're introducing beer and wine, somehow it's a problem. But I don't see that because it would be really nice in this town. It's a small little town, it'd be so nice to have a place to go to, to get really good food and a family atmosphere where I can just have one glass of wine with my male. That's it. And not deal with people drinking all around you. You know, you go to, all these bars on 28, they're so loud and obnoxious and I'd love to have a place to have a quiet dinner and just have a glass of wine. And the food is awesome. Tony is a great cook, Sandy is a great cook and it's nice to have a small family place. And that's what they have, is a family place. It's not a bar, it's not the horseshoe, it's not kiddies. It's this small little place and they just want to serve beer and wine. And the safety issues, like Jeff said, are the responsibility of the town, it's not theirs. It's you guys. If it's unsafe, fix it. That's it.
Sure.
Hi, my name's James McInerney, One Twenty-Eight Park Street. I'm against it for all the same reasons I was in the first place. The police are against it. It is a safety issue. My main concern is, I'm a young father, I'm a father of young kids. There's high foot traffic in that area, the highest in town. You know, Twenty-Eight doesn't have it, everybody's saying about all these places on Twenty-Eight. There's not, tons of kids around there. Going in and out of all the places across at the center of town, it's a totally different area. Against serving alcohol in the center of town. Now, whether it's right or wrong, I don't know. I'd be against it at Mike's or wherever it is. I don't think there's a, a place for it. You know, there's daycares over there, there's karate studios, there's all kinds of things. And the license once given, whether it's the Del Greco's leave or not, the license is there. They could be the most honorable people in the world. I don't know. But once you give the license, you've given it. Who takes it over? What happens at that point? I don't know. My main concern is the children. I'm a, I'm a father, and I see things differently. And I just think it's a negative impact on the center of town. And so I'm against it. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gary McGrath from One Susan Drive, here in town. I'm in favor of giving them the license. If you deny them the license, is that line of sight going to get any better? No. Is the line of sight coming from the other, going to get any better? No. The problem's been there. That being said, I could might have come across the street, I have just as much trouble getting out of the rush hour as I do here. Coming out of Park Street after eating breakfast, I haven't had that much trouble getting onto the street because I use what I consider safe riding habits. I look, I look, I look. The thing I hear a lot is kids, kids, kids. Yes, kids are in the morning, they're on the streets in the afternoon. But from five at night till eight or ten at night, you're not having that many young kids, or there shouldn't be that many young kids, in the streets that time of night in that area. The amount of alcohol that I see being served, one, two glasses of wine with a meal, that's minimal. It's, I didn't, I can't even see why we spend so much time on it. But in the long run, I hope they get the license. I don't drink beer, I don't drink wine. My wife likes wine. When she drives, I drive. So, you know, in the long run, I've, in the past, you've heard all the arguments, safety, line of sight, lighting, snow. They're there day, night, year round. They started with a small business, and have made it succeed, and to that, it's no small feat for a restaurant to do. They have a good clientele, and I don't believe that clientele is going to change by giving them beer and wine license. It's still going to be the same mom-and-pop restaurant, and at least I hope it will stay that way. And for that reason, I hope that this is going to put to bed. Give them the license, give them a shot. And if you don't want to give it to them outright, is it possible to give them one year? Food for thought. Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to be heard regarding this issue? Oh, sir, I'm sorry, you had your hand up earlier.
My name is Andy Hagopian, I'm from Reading, Fifty-Four Field Pond Drive. I've been frequenting this establishment probably for about four years now. My wife and son both have a kind of unique situation. My son is severely autistic, my wife has a plate nerve back and Lyme disease, so she cannot do long car rides. The Center Street Cafe has been sort of our source of entertainment in a way for breakfast, you know, over the last four years. We've been there during warm weather, ice, snow, rain. We've never had a problem as far as parking goes or safety. The sidewalk has always been cleared. I wouldn't let my wife walk on the sidewalk if it wasn't, because one fall could really have detrimental effects on her. They were open for a brief period of time, and we frequented the establishment probably three times for dinner. And coming from Reading, I've actually had more of a problem on Sixty-Two by Ryers, coming out from Haverhill Street than I have on this establishment. When my wife isn't up to going out and she wants their food, which is very good, I'll sometimes take my bike down from Reading and, you know, just pedal down there just for the exercise. I've never had a problem. I've been in this restaurant when it's just my wife and I in there, I've been in there when an early release day is at school and they've had a lot of kids in there. It's always been orderly. There's never been any routiness. It's one of the few establishments that my son can eat in without being overstimulated too. My own personal point is it would be lovely to be able to take my son and wife out to dinner and have a glass of wine in a local establishment like that. And knowing these two, as long as I've known them, I can't imagine them letting anybody have excess alcohol or anything getting out of hand. Like I said, I've been there in crowds, I've been there in quiet times, I've never seen anything get out of hand. It's been nothing but a positive experience. And I really would urge the board to grant them the license to, you know, so that people like us can go enjoy a glass of wine once in a while and have a good time. Thank you very much.
Did I miss someone?
Can you speak if you're from out of town?
Sure.
Oh. Bob Winters, I live in Middleton, Mass, used to live in North Reading, and I think life has brought opportunity. If you don't give someone an opportunity, they're never going to have certain chances in life. And if you ever go to Somerville, Metford, Melrose, the North End, there's plenty of restaurants where there's no parking, and people can have dinner, a drink, and there's no problem. Same thing in East Boston. There's a place called The Rhino's on Bennington Street. Have you ever been there? So people drive fifty, sixty miles an hour down Bennington Street, and there's never any problem with someone having a bite to eat. And most of those establishments close at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, and they don't have any issues. But you have to give people opportunity. You give them a shot, and then you see where it goes from there. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else care to speak before I close the public hearing?
I think I, we're blessed with a board that has more than one attorney. Correct?
Nope.
No? Just one? Just one?
It wasn't really have one attorney.
Oh, dear.
I wish they had none, but...
I wonder if this is rolling along so well. A couple of questions I just, and I think you guys already know this, but some of us don't, at least I don't. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the board has, let's suppose these two end up in heaven way sooner than they're supposed to, and somebody else comes along and wants that license. Don't they have to come before you to get approved?
We have to approve transfer license.
You got to approve, transfer the license. Problem solved. Not problem solved, there's no problem. You guys get a, get a free look at the next taker. And let's suppose that we get Hell's Angels from Los Angeles converging on North Reading and wanting to dine at Center Cafe. And they put up with it. You, you think maybe the police chief is going to call them in for maybe a review? No problem. I, I second everybody in support of this, and I hope you give them the opportunity.
Would you overnote?
I seem to let this come up again. I want to say that I have an article from the transcript, written by the editor of the transcript, back when we had this hearing before. And he said another thing. "The suggestion was made Monday night that the liquor license could be issued for a year so the town can see how it goes. The implication is that if it doesn't work out, the license can be rescinded next year." "It just doesn't work that way, as the town found out years ago, to its sorrow and expense with other establishments. Once a liquor license is issued, it cannot be rescinded without lengthy and expensive hearings involving lawyers and appeals to the ABCC. The selectmen should be sensitive to the concerns of the neighborhood residents who spoke from the heart when they called it a little too much for the area." And they have another comment, and that is, the Christopher's Plaza, from what I understand, has new ownership in the last six months, and that this owner, I was going to email you, hopefully he did, because he is against, he's not going to allow them to park over Mike Ottery of M&amp;H, he is going to be selling or retiring, rumor has it, in a couple of years here, so that is certainly very tentative parking. And five of the spaces that they have are illegal. The three that are on the street in front of the building belong to Town of North Reading, and North Reading has no legal parking on the streets. And two of the, the parking spaces between the two family and the restaurant are illegal because they're in the right of way, and the Del Greco's did not remove the lines as they were told four years ago. So those lines are there, but they was never followed through. And the other is for Mr. Fody. Of course, Mr. Liakos is for the owner of the place, is for the license, because it just enhances the value of his property when he sells it or whatever.
Well, the only reason I asked the question, one of the concerns was for the neighbors who live directly next door, I wanted to make sure that it was the same people, that the owner was the same.
Right, right.
As the commercial property. And then in fact, that he was aware that they were here and that he had...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. But, of course, he would. It just increases his value should he get an alcohol license.
You'll be next. This lady first, all right?
Hi, it's Wendy Delina, Ninety-Eighth Park Street. I just want to say, you brought up Somerville, Boston, they have buses, taxis, okay? They have apartment buildings, people can walk. All right? I grew up in Walden, I had a couple of liquor store, bars down the street, restaurants and stuff. And I woke up, I was thirteen, to a car wrapped around the tree. I do not want to have that happen here. I did not want to live near a liquor store that, a barroom, I'm sorry, or any place that served liquor. Okay? I don't want to go through that again, watching someone die. All right? Giving CPR to someone who is dead is not a nice thing. I, again, don't think this is a good intersection, okay? It's not their fault, sorry, it's the towns. They allowed that bridge to be put in without looking at what was going on. They, I don't know how the wall got approved for Christopher's. I don't know where the town has control over these things. All right? The removal of the sidewalk in front of Mike's, it was beautiful sidewalk they put in. The next day, they take it out, and we just get this pile of stone and this little curb that goes from, across the street from Washington and across the street to Park. You know, and, you know, what went down Park Street East, it's all gone. I mean, and not until you get to, I can't think of their names, the House Rataza gas station, where the telephone pole sits, then you have a sidewalk.
Reynolds.
Reynolds, yes. Couldn't think of the names. Sorry. But that's all I have to say. Okay? It is, again, not their fault, it is, I don't know if it's the towns, just bad layout, bad planning, a hundred years ago when they laid everything out. You know, I mean, we've got arch-shaped lots and whatnot. You know, the street is just too curvy, too narrow. Yeah. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sir? Roger, what did you get?
Do I need to restate my name? No? Yeah? No. Just one point, and that is, which I guess is an obvious point, but I'll restate it anyway, and that is, it's the neighborhood who basically is against this. We're the people who live with it every day. Everyone who's in support isn't living there every day. And so to us, yeah, we see the hazard, hazard over and over and over. And it's not really a big deal until they get busy. Saturday, Sunday, Sunday especially. During the day is different than at night. Once again, the burden falls on the neighborhood, and it's an everyday thing for us. We can't get away from it unless we sell and move. So I urge the board to consider the fact that the impact on the neighbors is greater than on the patrons. Thanks.
Just quickly, I just want to read to you from the Alcohol and Beverage Control Commission, dated July seven, two thousand and ten, with the, when they affirmed the vote, the last meeting. In conclusion, they said, "The license has failed to produce any additional evidence to support an argument for a wine and malt beverage license, and has failed to meet the requirement for a public need. Denying the wine and, the wine and malt beverage license application is affirmed." So, in the last time we addressed this issue, on a three-to-two vote, we denied the license, the state affirmed it. And the only difference now is the makeup of the board. It's the only difference. But the issues are the same, the concerns are the same. There's been no significant change, like a light signal, which I had mentioned, that if they had a pedestrian light there, that you could just push the button and people could cross, that, that could make a difference right then and there. So nothing really has changed, the state has supported the previous decision, and it would, and with safety being the ma, a major issue on this, on this decision, it would, it would seem that the, the really only course of action that you have would be to deny this license. And I'm sorry for them, because, again, they run a fine establishment and they're good people. Thank you.
With that, I will close the public hearing.
The board of assembly hasn't spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry. You haven't spoken.
Dave Richards, Fifteen Leland Road. I won't bore you with many things that have been said by both sides at night, I just want to let you know that I'm in favor of the license issuance to Center Cafe. The snow's not, not their problem, it's the guy across the street. The sightline is not a problem. You can see further up the, up the Park Street than you can when you come out of the Christopher's parking lot. Christopher's parking lot's got a worse sightline than, than Center Cafe. So, I'm for it. Let's give it to them, give them a shot, and that'll be good.
Can I be brief?
I just want to say one thing. The gentleman said that the only thing that's changed is the board, but the people elected the board.
Does anyone who's not previously spoken wish to speak? No? Seeing no hands, I'm now closing the public hearing. Open to board discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Del Greco, you do want to respond?
If you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Book.
So, again, at the beginning of the meeting, you, what went on in the previous meetings, so the same exact thing is happening again today. A lot of what-ifs. What if, what if, what if. Let me start with the kids, large foot traffic with children. Foot traffic with children is typically on a half-a-day school, which typically happens on a Thursday or Friday, unless the school's going through testing, and sometimes it could be more days in the week. School buses, school generally gets out starting at two. School buses usually stop running quarter of three, somewhere around there. I don't know about anybody else. But in the restaurant industry, between one-thirty in the afternoon and five o'clock in the evening, there is no business. That's all dead time. We're prepping food for dinner service, things like that. The children getting off the bus, it, it doesn't make sense to me. Because there is no business. There's no business at my place, there's no business at Kitty's, Joe Fish, nowhere. When we close, I drive around through the town to get home, and there's no cars in anybody's parking lot. So that, that takes care of that. Foot traffic, safety, sightlines, at night, in the evening. Again, we're... Again, we're open in the evening, and someone stated that I smoke like a fiend, so I generally run across the street to Christopher's. I don't open anybody else, but during the nighttime, when I was at Christopher's parking lot, crossing back over to my restaurant, it's easier to see a car at night with the headlights coming than during the day. You can see the headlights from a mile away, during the day you can't see the lights.
Parking spots are just parking spots?
No, parking spots, parking spots. Parking spots don't rule whether a liquor license should be given or not. Town bylaws state how many parking spots it takes to have, how many seats you can occupy in your restaurant. By my math, we have enough. Without using Mike Otterey's, without Christopher's, we have enough parking for our seats. Has nothing to do with alcohol, according to the town bylaws.
One seat per table of four.
No, one parking spot per, per four seats.
Parking spot, right. Per four seats.
What's that, fifteen spots?
I think it's sixteen.
Whatever. In other words, we already have enough parking for the occupancy of our restaurants.
Sixty-three seats, you mean, called sixty.
Without mics and with-
And I think we have eighteen, is that what, was that?
Well, the chief raised, you have eighteen, but that's counting the double, the employee parking.
That double, it's the employees parked there and the customers parked behind them.
And then there's another three spots in front that really aren't needed to us, but customers, I mean, no one else parked there except the customers.
I just wanna be clear on the number of parking spots.
That's included in the eighteen.
The eighteen is, it includes the employee parking. Correct. So, there'd be four spots there.
Right. Plus, we also have on the other side of the house that divides the parking spots. Unfortunately, one of the smaller apartment is supposed to have two, they take up four, which has been addressed to landlords, so two of those-
Well, they're parking actually in the grass.
No, they're taking two of our spots.
Whatever. Uh-
Chief, I think the chief-
Included in the parking spots we counted were the space out in front, which the town owns.
Those weren't included?
Those were included.
I think we have more than that.
I want to recount tomorrow.
I think the number is larger. I think it was more like twenty-four if you counted those spots. And there was a certified drawing done by O'Neil Associates that was submitted during our last meeting, it was stamped by the engineer.
Do we have that?
We do, we don't have in the packet though. We could, we could locate.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
So then we do have, 'cause that's how the driveway was striped, it was in accordance with those drawings.
How many handicap spots do you have?
We have one.
If that's your requirement, you only have one?
The handicap.
Hmm?
Yes.
And it's on a, it's on a pole, I believe, six feet, which is, I believe, a legal height. And it's only on a pole, on a cement bale, so we can roll it over, so we can do stone removal. And then it goes back in front of the parking spot.
But it's also-
And the parking spot is also clearly marked on the pavement.
It's got a handicap marking on it.
Chief Burke, if you'd like to have a lot of safety, I'll sort of address the handicap mark.
Any kind of requirements that are required, has to be, paint's on the ground, it also has to be three to five feet high, front of five feet square, it's going up to it, that's three climb, because if they have it on the ground, in case a quantum of other snow and sand covers it, it also has to be visible three to five feet high.
We do have all.
Well, it is on the ground.
It also includes, has to have the hash marks for exiting from a van, et cetera, has to have the extended, extended to the left, to the right.
It does. It does have that. But my side is up a little bit higher than three or four feet, it's more like-
We'd just like to recommend we get to see the plan, the park plan, of, the size of what the parking, we get to see our parking plan.
Everything was submitted to the board. It was submitted to the board, it was sent, given to CPC.
The plan you represented-
Previous.
That's the previous application.
Correct.
Right, right, right. I wasn't asked to re-present that.
I think Mr. Bell, you call this may have it.
Watch out, watch out, watch out.
No, that's not it.
Yes, it is.
Something, you wanna come up and reveal it as well?
Evidence of parking, please.
Have some additional copies of that anywhere else.
I would like to see.
All are looking. Mr. George, ask the chief a question?
Sure. Do you know how it's determined how many handicap spots are needed for a restaurant?
I'm not, can you answer that? How many handicap spots are needed?
Are required.
Yeah, we had, um, you can get the answers from, to be called the building inspector.
Yeah, I asked him for that, he's gonna get the numbers, what was required by the seating and opposed to our management.
Twelve, we're counting twelve. Well, this, it's marked, actually, by O'Neil Associates, it says, "Restaurant customer parking space is seventeen, tenant parking space is four." I, looking at it, I can't determine-
We went out and actually counted them the other day, and if you can see, there's two spaces here that aren't actually, he parked in the street, he was actually parked in them.
You're not actually in the street, though, you're inside the plot line?
Well, this right here, stolen, stolen right away, right away, this one, the light is not the proper light, right here, just some of, just some of the parking, with some lengths of parking, right away.
And that doesn't, to my read of this, regardless of whether they're in the right of way or not, the three in front are not included. Do you gentlemen agree with me on that? The three, the three in front look like they're Xed out, or they're not counted, but it does look like there's one, two, three that are right away.
At least three in the right-
At least three.
So that would reduce the total of fourteen. Customer parking for-
Comes to seventeen plus four.
Tenant parking. Without counting the total.
Unless he has a few other questions for the town administration related to this, that maybe Mr. Del Greckle can help with.
Okay, if it's, if you stay on point.
Yes, it's on point. I see that the CPC has, has to submit a form as well, and is it under their, is this under their jurisdiction as well?
No, because it's not an alteration of the premises that's being conducted, so it falls outside of their review process.
Would it be inappropriate to have them part of the discussion? Because it seems like the parking is a major issue.
It's not required.
It's not required.
Pre-existing condition, that, you know, I mean, there's all taxpayers in this room, and they provide a valuable service.
Well, I mean, in, but we went out of our way to go and do this, to have this drawn up. Before this was drawn up and before those lines were put in, there were no lines in that restaurant. People just parked wherever. I mean, it's in a pre-existing establishment, the restaurant's been there for nineteen years. It's like, okay, we wanna do this, but let's help the community out, let's do that, let's fix this, and now let's go and fix that. And it's, it's just this big-
Ongoing.
Let's just keep trying and trying and trying until someone finally says, yes, you know, if we've done enough. You know, again, safety concern is, it's our concern, you know, the what-ifs, that's our concern, and it's our job to make sure those what-ifs don't happen. When someone walks into my establishment, it's my job to analyze that person, if they're consuming alcohol, when is it time to make them stop? Should they be having food with their food, with their wine or beer? Yeah, you should. This isn't a barroom, it's a restaurant. And that's all it's ever gonna be.
That's why I'm asking, that CPC should be involved, Mr. Del Greckle, I'm not trying to argue with you.
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, I'm just-
I get the sense that you are.
No, not at all.
And I'm trying to say to you is that, you keep saying, you keep providing, keep providing, and you keep getting no's.
Well, well-
So, let's just help you get the yeses.
Right.
But you don't have the right people involved, and this doesn't work for me.
Again, Mr. Prisco, you know, it's kinda frustrating on our part, because every time that we've been in front of the board, and it's not the board's fault, all of a sudden there's something new that's wanted.
Then I won't say anything. I'll sit here and be quiet. If you don't want anything new-
No, 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 no.
That's not what he's-
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I don't think you understand what he's trying to say.
There's, there's a lot of talk about safety concerns and what-ifs, and this is my, my big issue. It's not you guys, it's the what-ifs. And I'm just trying, I'm excited trying to get it across, is that it's our job to control that.
Right.
It's our job to make sure that a customer doesn't leave intoxicated. The other things are pre-existing, they already exist.
I just addressed the what-ifs. I, I agree with you highly that as a business owner, it's partially our responsibility, but it's also our responsibility to make sure that we don't put anybody in that position.
Agreed.
I think he means from the onset of a customer coming in to evaluate prior to.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying to make an argument, I was just making the point that, you know, we have to listen to every single person that comes in and listen to their concerns.
No, I understand that wholeheartedly. You know, I mean, I grew up in, in the city, and there was beer and wine and full alcohol, you know, below apartment buildings, with full restaurants. I mean, it was great to walk to the paddock down the street from my house and be able to grab a pizza and a beer and walk home if my car broke down, when I was younger, you know, it was, communities need what we have, and all we wanna do is just provide for it. We're not trying to do anything bad, we're not gonna try to make anything out of it that is not already, it's gonna be the same.
In fairness, I don't think, I didn't hear tonight anyway that anybody's accusing you of being a bad business owner or trying to do anything other than the fact, I think the majority of people who are opposed to it are, are just concerned more about safety.
Right.
That, that being said, it's something that has to be considered. I'm not saying it's a, it's a, it's a slam dunk, but it's something that has to be, that has to be considered by our part.
Right, and we, and we wholeheartedly agree with that. You know, we, we see a lot of the points. And, and some of our frustration is that they're, they already exist, they're already there. So as long as we keep control over what we do in our, in our restaurant, they're never gonna become a problem. Like one of the speakers said, he's in Boston, he's going down, he's fifty-five miles an hour, they're serving booze, they're, they're selling food, and there's never an issue. But all of a sudden, the Center Cafe is gonna be another issue. And I'm not saying that to the board, I'm just-
No, I-
We just want the same opportunities the other businesses in town have that are actually located in residential areas as well.
I'm gonna ask a question, I don't take this as anything other than a question on my part, that's all. First of all, let me stress by saying that my, my daughter loves her establishment, she goes quite often, she walks from high school and is there very, very often, so I just wanted to say that. But that being said, with the issues that you've had over the last several years, we're trying to get a, whether it be a liquor license or beer and wine license, because of the location, have you ever thought of moving to another location?
Oh, sure, I've looked into it, we've looked into moving over to the Stop and Shop Plaza. I called the realty company, can't go in. When the Chinese restaurant went in, they had to make a few different modifications to the storage system over there, they're waiting on a storage treatment plant to be put in, they can't allow any other restaurants to operate there. But we went through the whole exercise, and, and that's what we came up with, trying to move down there. Same thing with over next door to Walmart, no more restaurants over there either, because they need to put in a storage treatment plant.
And I was just asking, I mean, I'm not, I'm not-
Oh, sure.
Trying to tell you how to run a business.
Trust me, you know, I'd like to have a bigger place in town, I don't wanna move out of town. We, we love our guests, we love them to come in that restaurant, they, everybody has a good time, they enjoy the food, makes me feel good.
Right.
You know, so we don't wanna move out of town, we don't, we wanna stay in town. But we don't have anyplace else to go. And, trust me, I'd love a bigger place, so that I could use it. But again, we talked about parking, and, and the parking is there, and there really isn't any problems, you know, there's still no accidents. And if it was dangerous, there would be accidents. I heard the chief say, oops, one to one-four-two, I didn't hear anything that said one-eighteen parking, because where I am, eighty feet in, sixty or eighty feet in from the intersection is where my parking stops. Nowhere near the intersection. That's really, I think that's all, unless you want.
I'd like to hear a little more detail from the safety officer and Lieutenant Romeo, who had appended to the previous report.
You're learning that?
Detailing, the chief went over, chief went over part of it, but I think some of the details that Lieutenant Romeo and Officer Tiltin offered us are pretty solid, too. Mr. Chairman?
Can I just hand this to you guys, to look this over while these speakers-
What is that? This is a zoning map of the whole town.
Okay.
It shows where the business zone is, I marked all the restaurants in town that have alcohol, and ones that don't serve food, just so you can-
Who wishes to go first?
Lieutenant?
Let me get the documents, Mr. Romeo. It's a ten, right? Tom Sarnik?
Lieutenant, I just wanna make sure he gets the acknowledgement that he deserves that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to start off by saying, I was involved in this process from the very start, back in '09, and I testified before the Alcohol Beverage Commission in Boston during one of the appeal processes. Based on what I had, my role in was to do a site review, review the data that was collected by our CAD system regarding the accidents and issues. We noticed several concerns in the initial application and subsequent re-application, including the limited parking, certified parking plan, which that is still not a certified parking plan, the close proximity to a residential home in the neighborhood, proposed off-site parking issues, pedestrian safety, lighting and signage issue related to crosswalks and the increased calls for service. Since the last application, there have been some improvements to the site, such as the angled parking in front of the establishment has been changed to parallel parking. That parking should be noted, that that's still part of the travel, not the travelway, but part of the public way and owned by the Town of North Reading, it should not be considered as parking for the establishment. Additional lighting has been added, and parking, and I mentioned the parking at the front of the building has been changed. The parking lot has also been striped, we're not sure if that conforms to the local bylaws as far as the dimensions of the parking spots. As you can see in some of the spots, they back out into the public way, at least three that we can, that we don't believe are adequate enough to be considered legal parking spots. We conducted another site visit of the establishment last week. In addition to the previous stated safety-related concerns, I noted the following. Due to no site plan review, due to the CPC not having jurisdiction in this matter, because it's still, it's not a new use for the structure, it is unknown how many parking spaces even exist on the lot, didn't take into consideration the residents who reside in the rental property next to the restaurant, I think they have four spots there, but if they had any guests there, they may not be site spots for their guests. Additionally, residential spaces weren't clearly marked, vehicles leaving the parking lot appear to have to back into the public way, and several of the parking spots noted on the plan. Off-site parking appears to be reduced, and that is due to the potential for the, the new owner of the North Reading Shopping Plaza limiting or hosting no parking for the restaurant in his parking lot. And the potential pedestrian traffic issues impacted by the stone wall construction and guardrail that now borders the North Reading Shopping Center. In conclusion, I submitted the report in 2009, it testified before the ABCC, indicated that even if all the safety-related concerns were approved at 118 Park Street, the police department would still have serious safety concerns if a liquor license was issued to that establishment. That's based on the 2009 review and the new data that came in recently, that actually shows an increase in motor vehicle accidents and calls for service in the area.
It was safety officer Tiltin, North Reading, please. My, my opinion, recommendations also reflected Lieutenant Romeo's same concerns, the safety issues, et cetera. Also included the town engineer, Flex Oregon, to come visit this here as well, how could better improve this road. Immediately recognized there were, we need additional crosswalk signs, those are recommendations made to request signs, to Mr. Conne Valley, which he expeditiously put the signs right out, the additional signs, crosswalk to make that safer. Mike Sorgen is currently gonna be reviewing the sixty-two construction plan that was approved a while back by the state, so we'll review that, see what we can better do to improve in the future. I just had a few sightline issues, whereas the parking that's in front of the restaurant was changed to parallel, from lateral to parallel. It does create some pedestrian safeties crossing, crossing over, it's hidden, hidden views for a small person crossing, because it's tough- was changed from parallel, from lateral to parallel. It does create some pedestrian safeties crossing, crossing over. It's hidden views for a small person crossing. Because it's terrible reaction time for motorists. If you're traveling eastbound sixty-two and you turn right for Park Street to turn down, Park Street towards Linfield, just terrible reaction time for vehicles to be pulling out, someone's walking, crossing, et cetera. Now, someone's caught in the crosswalk if the traffic's coming the other way from Linfield approaching that intersection. They're stepping off in the corner if a vehicle's parked in that corner spot. They cannot be seen until they're at least three to four feet in the crosswalk. Once again, terrible reaction time. Now, even though they're approaching a stop sign, but once they're looking at that obstructed sightline as everybody's confirmed, a dip in the road coming, you have to pause. You have to pause and make sure it's clear. But also, you're going to be, as approaching that intersection, you're not going to be able to see a small person if a vehicle's parked there coming into the crosswalk. It's a dangerous intersection, so we've had, Mr. Sorgen says, we've seen we can better improve it. We've added additional signs, brought attention to there, and I'm sure Chief Murphy's going to put a lot more selective enforcement in that area.
Chief, in terms of your... Officer, you complete, I'm sorry, it sounded like you were done. You completely, thank you, thank you very much. Chief, in terms of what I'd be concerned about is accidents at that intersection. I know you told us that they've increased from two to four over the last three days, but I'm looking to determine how many accidents are within that intersection, park on the Washington, park on the...
There's no actual address there, so it's difficult. Typically, what we'll use is a nearest address. I'll go through a few of them just to kind of give you an idea. Since 2009, I'll just read the first sentence in the log entry, but back in 2009, this was at the Senate Cafe. Employee from Senate Cafe reports minor two-car accident in front of their restaurant. August 2009, one-eighteen Park Street by one Washington Street, motor vehicle versus motorcycle, cell phone call, dial nine-one, no reported injuries. One-eighteen Park Street, one Washington Street, this is back in March of 2010. Nine-one call reports motor vehicle accident initially gave a park in Haverhill, found at Washington and Park Street at the bridge. Back in April 2010, two-car accident reported on Washington Street by the bridge. Back in August fifteen, 2010, nine-one call reports vehicle over the embankment towards the river. Operator's out of the vehicle that was at six Washington Street, Christopher's Market. That's in the intersection. July thirty-one, 2011, nine-one call reports numerous nine-one calls report motor vehicle hit and run left involving two motorcycles. That was at the Black Honda Civic, Oldhamore River, and two motorcycles in front of the Senate Cafe. October 2011, nine-one call reported motor vehicle with possible PI, one-eighteen Park Street by one Washington Street. October 2011, Senate Cafe, one-eighteen Park Street by one Washington Street. Nine-one call reports crash in front of the Senate Cafe, injuries involved. March 2012, nine-one call reports minor motor vehicle accident, Washington Street by Park Street. I'll have a few more. September 2012, nine-one call reporting motor vehicle accident at the Senate Cafe, vehicle into pole. December 2012, multiple nine-one calls reported a possible rollover, one-car accident. That was at three Washington Street.
Can we, who's three?
Three is it?
Right in front of the...
Another walk-in motor vehicle crash and that one occurred right at the mouth of the Christopher's Market in six Washington Street, right in front of the intersection. Another one, six Washington Street, minor motor vehicle crash in front of the entrance to Christopher's Market. This is back in July 2013, fire department reported vehicle, UPS truck struck a fire hydrant on one-fourteen Park Street. And we had a, August 2013, several reports of motor vehicle crash, vehicle left the scene and that was at Washington and Park Street. And the last one is September 2013, report of a vehicle struck another car at the mouth of Christopher's Market. So this is just a sampling of the accidents that I had reported. That's what our CAD system statistics show.
Seems like the driver wasn't coming out of Christopher's Market. It seems like he came from the opposite side of the street if I...
Well, it's the intersection.
Okay.
The intersection.
Thank you.
Home hearing, board members, wish to discuss, Mr. Chairman?
You know, I haven't had as much opportunity as passports to go through all this, but it just seems to me, after what I've read up till today, the same issues continue to keep coming up. The parking obviously is the number one, in my mind, and maybe in the police department's minds a little different, but in my mind, it's the parking. Snow storage issues, lighting issues. There's no doubt that the Del Breccos deserve the opportunity to enhance their business anyway. And I think that we need to find a way to help you fix that one issue, at least to get my vote. And what is on this piece of paper today doesn't help me. So I'm going to encourage, that's why I encourage the CPC to get involved, whatever we have to do to help this business succeed. And for the residents in that area, I understand. I fully accept the issues associated with the safety and the safety issues that everybody's come up here. All kind of stem back to the parking in this area. It's a bad situation. So put aside the way the parking, this is a business. It's owned for business. It's been a business for years and years and years and you bought your homes near there and these are the things that tend to happen when you buy and you will buy commercially slash residential property. So we have to make it right for both, for you and for the residential, I mean, for the residents and for the commercial businesses there. That's our responsibility. But safety does have to be number one. So I would ask the board to support me in trying to find a way, to see if there is any way to really solve this issue of parking because, as the chief has done a great job presenting to us tonight, the way these parking positions right now, backing out into that area can be pretty challenging, especially when you have snow storage added to it for four months side of the year, could even add another challenge. So that's where I stand. I just want to be one-hundred percent honest with you. I really want to see you get this and I really think you deserve it because my family enjoys going to your place very much and I enjoy going there. And I'd like to see you continue to strive, to thrive and do wonderful things. But we can't do it at the risk of everyone else. So let's work together. And that's where I stand.
Well, I'm kind of in the same, at least close to what Mike is thinking. If this was a brand-new facility and they were applying for license, the parking would be directly tied to the number of tables. So, and it's clear to me there's not really adequate parking on that property. When you look at the drawing, there's parking spaces that are out in the, into the foggy area, which is really caught in the public way. So I don't know whether there's a trade-off to reduce the number of, you know, this is a viable business situation, reduce the number of tables to get it so that you don't need as many parking spaces.
I was thinking something similar. At least, I don't know if we can do that as the giver of the license, but can you limit your seating at night that comports with, what complies with state regulations concerning the width and size of the parking spaces? And I'd like to see you contain your parking onsite versus gas station. I'm sorry, Mr. Mr. Harry, I know, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I think we're thinking along the same lines.
This is a good conversation.
Forget about parking over at Christopher's. Forget about parking at Mr. Harder's. But determine what the legal parking spots are onsite and if there's a way we could limit your seating capacity at night that comports with those numbers, that number of parking spots onsite. And I think you have to require your patrons to back into spots instead of fully face it. But go ahead. I mean, I think we're thinking along the same lines.
Well, I'm going to back into it from Park Street, stop at Park Street, back into the spots?
Well, the concern is...
I'm concerned about them stopping in another park.
That being, you know, that being...
The concern is by backing out.
That being said, the other issues associated with the police department's concerns about that intersection is not necessarily the responsibility of the restaurant. It's an awful issue. It appears that a lot of the accidents are a result of what's coming out of the plaza across the street. And having driven back and forth many times there, there's always this surprise in the morning, especially when there's traffic trying to come out and there's traffic coming up at Park Street too. So, you know, I think as a community, maybe we ought to be looking at doing something associated with it, independent of this particular issue. If in fact, I don't know if the state would approve traffic lights over there. I'm not a big fan of traffic lights everywhere anyway, but...
We don't have a heavy foot.
I agree that when you're coming off of Park Street and you're going to make a left-hand turn, you really have to creep out there to see and then to see over the bridge. I also know that many times in those kinds of situations, assuming people have their headlights on at night, it's easier to maneuver at night than it is during the day and that was previously mentioned. I'm very much in support of our businesses in town and this is a tough one because we have a neighborhood in the area. We have the parking issue. Another thing that I would suggest and find out if proponents are interested in doing it is, it seems to me that what's being proposed is to offer beer and wine at a meal. And therefore, why would you need to have a served beer and wine at the so-called bar with six or seven seats?
I don't know if you've been in, but it's like a counter, it's a counter, it's not a, I would call it a bar.
A breakfast counter, okay.
Where people sit there and eat.
Probably that's how.
Yeah.
So people leaving in the evening might eat there?
We would, yeah.
Individual.
We'd have to change that because of the equipment that would be needed.
Okay.
Change it where we got it?
That would have to be raised because we'd have to have the proper equipment underneath.
Yeah, refrigeration.
Sink and all the refrigeration, et cetera.
Could we just simply bring wine? Or we need the refrigeration underneath that?
But you wouldn't serve alcohol.
We don't need to serve alcohol without food. Again, we just want to be a restaurant that gives somebody the chance to have a glass of red wine or whatever, or a beer with their meal. No, we're not looking to be a bar.
So you'd be okay if we were to grant the license, put the limitation that you'd have to serve?
Absolutely. We considered that last time, yeah.
Consume food or to purchase alcohol.
And stay to one, only one TV, so it never turns into a sports bar. You know, we're happy to make this.
Mr. Delaney, I just wanted to check down a second. The license is a common Victorian license. The alternative is called a tavern license and that's the service of alcohol without food and we don't allow those in North Running. So if there's any concern that the license could migrate to that, it won't happen.
We don't, so all our licenses, you have to, you're supposed to...
We have some clubs, fraternal clubs, which are different, but our other licenses all are associated with the service of food.
Yes, but there are restaurants in town that have a bar adjacent to...
That don't require you to...
That don't require you to eat.
But we are saying technically they...
It's the offering of food on premises. It's up to the patronist to whether they wish to have that option. But again, it's called a tavern license and that license isn't available in North Running.
Thank you.
Mr. Polari?
From what I've heard, and again, all of this was brought up last time too, they agreed, you know, just serve with the food, one TV. Everything that was discussed this evening was discussed twice before. The only two things that have changed from what I've heard tonight is that you've got a couple of new members of the board who didn't have the advantage of sitting through all this stuff previously and their business has improved. Other than that, everything else we've heard the same. There's been a little bit more reported from the police department, but the facts are still the same. You know, as far as the establishment, I mean, I grew up in town, bought and raised there and that whole thing. There's a reason that that particular facility hasn't had late-night establishments, you know, beyond a certain period of time. I think they probably had the latest opening of that establishment. I mean, when I grew up there, there was an auto parts store that said Joe the Butcher, the barber, was at the corner that everybody hated going to and it's not anymore. And, you know, there's been nail shops in there, there's been a floor shop, auto parts store, you know, Joe the Butcher. And then there was Richie's, which was a breakfast and lunch place. There was Annette's, which was a breakfast and lunch place. There was Gatherings, which was breakfast and lunch. And for a very short period of time, you know, they offered dinners, but then it just went to primarily catering. It wasn't even open. They shut it down. It just did catering out of the facility. You know, and then the Del Breccos, who since they've taken over, has done a fabulous job of enhancing the appearance of this particular establishment from what it was over the last forty, fifty years that I recall. They've done a terrific job in maintaining. Again, my position, again, I feel badly. I'm an avid supporter of local businesses too. But I didn't make the business decision to operate and to invest in this particular piece of property. So when it comes to the particular location, you know, safety, quality of life for the residents there, what they've established, what they bought into, as you pointed out, they bought a business district, a commercial district, but for fifty-nine years, business district really hasn't changed that much other than it was, Abbot Shoe was there years ago, and then Bell Market, Bell Supermarket. But the gas station, the other establishments closed by six o'clock at night. That's what they bought into. That was their neighborhood. That's what they expected and that's what they've had for close to sixty years that I'm aware of. Then I think we need to be cognizant of the impact that we could potentially, again, it's all the what-ifs, to potentially impact this neighborhood with. I would hope if we were to give it, they'd be successful, if there's a successful expansion of ours. If we issue a liquor license to this particular location of these people, you know, and they choose to sell out, I can tell you right now, having sat here for a long time, we would be hard-pressed not to transfer the license and entertain the request for a transfer of license unless you have some sort of good reason in relation to the reputation and the character of the individuals that are looking to buy into the establishment. The neighborhood has not had to, let's say, suffer through later-night establishments in this particular location. There is no doubt that the parking is a significant issue. The safety, sightlines, everything that's been cited by the police department is accurate and true. And when we went before the ABCC to uphold the decision that the local board made, the ABCC, again, in their decision upheld the decision of this board and twice. So, you know, I feel badly for them. They're good people. They're good residents of the community, good business residents of the community. They give back to the community. But they made the investment in this particular location, which is not suitable for the establishment that they're looking to put in here. And I think it's important that we don't lose sight of it and set ourselves up and other people. We have to protect, you know, the current residents of the town, but also those people that drive through this town, not just pedestrians, not just the neighborhood, but the people that drive through the town. And we have people backing out and, you know, you add later times in the establishment, more business, again, I would expect that the business would increase. We're putting more people at risk unnecessarily. So again, when I voted against it the last time, I felt badly. I still feel badly in saying no. I still feel badly in saying no, but nothing's changed. I think it's a bad idea. I think it's a bad precedent to be set. And again, this is not the first establishment we have voted no against. Papa Gino's, applied years ago, and the former chief said, sightline's coming out of that location. Not good, on twenty-eighth, and it's right down the street, right where heavily buildings were, used to be a power room when I grew up. So, things have improved.
How old are you, Steve?
I know, I've been around a lot of time. My memory is, it's a long-term, it's a long-term, it's a long-term memory that I have. To ask me what I had for breakfast, I couldn't tell you. But, but no, truly, I, again, I just think nothing has changed, and for us to vote in favor of this application to change the safety of the neighborhood, location, I think we're just putting other people at risk. I think it's a bad idea, and it's unfortunate that I can't sit here in a good conscience supporting. So, nothing's changed, other than the two members of the board, and their business has increased without it, and that's a good thing. It's deserved, and they run a great establishment, but it's not the right location. They can't have china there, right? I mean, they're right on the river. There's a whole host of issues with the facility, but it's been breakfast and lunch place for forty, forty years over off and on over the years. So, it is what it is. It fits in the neighborhood, and even today, it has an impact on the neighborhood at certain times. They've learned to live with it and cope with it, but what we're doing now is we're considering impacting them even more inadvertently. I think it's not fair to the residents that are there, it's not fair from a safety standpoint. I think we should go with the recommendation of the police department and say it just isn't suitable, unfortunately.
Mr. Polari? Yeah, I've sat here tonight and listened to everybody's testimony, and I wasn't part of the board last time they came up, but, I mean, as a, as a resident who I thought was active and participated in certain things, I, you know, I knew what was going on. This is a difficult one for me, just so you know, I grew up, my family in the restaurant business, and I'm a huge advocate for, for small business. I have mixed feelings on this one, and it's a difficult one for me because I believe you deserve every opportunity that everybody else has. I believe you run a legitimately great business. I think you're, from what I'm hearing and from what I've heard in the past, you're two people that we are proud to have as, as residents of the town of North Reading and as business I'm generally concerned for the safety of the neighborhood, but it's a tough one for me. I, right now, I'm hoping, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we put the vote up for the next meeting, only because there's a lot of backup stuff that I need to look at before...
I think I'm going to suggest tabling a formal vote for the board, because I'd like to have, whether the town engineer or maybe remember the least about it, take a look at the parking spots and determine how many legal parking spots there are on-site, eliminating those that cross out onto the right-of-way. So, I'm not gonna call for a formal vote this evening, so I think we do need some additional information.
I appreciate that.
I think we do that.
You know, not being out there on a regular basis myself, I have to defer to the police And they, what they say weighs heavily on, on my decision, but that being said, again, I, I understand the position you're in, and I understand why there is, there is a request bar, again, being in the, in the biz for many years myself. So, I want you to understand that I haven't made a decision as of yet. I'm gonna do my due diligence over the next two weeks before the next meeting to make sure that I make a decision that I feel, once I, once I make that decision, once I place that vote, that I'm comfortable that I, I did everything I needed to do to make sure that I was fair to everybody involved. And, you know, sometimes you have to make a decision that's unpopular. Apparently, this one's gonna be, we're not gonna make everybody happy on this one, but I need to be able to look in the mirror and say, and I did everything I needed to do to make sure I made the right decision. So, that's why I need that, that's your two weeks, Mr. Chairman.
In addition to the town engineer, I would encourage that the CPC at least be involved from the outside. I know they don't have jurisdiction, but they have the knowledge, they do this all the time, and I think they would be a helpful, be part of the discussion.
I don't disagree. So, Mr. Diakonis, if...
I can send them an informal request. We just have to be careful that all license applications coming before this board are treated the same way, so that if we haven't asked the CPC for input on other license applications before you, I would hesitate in terms of making it a requirement for this particular license.
It is a requirement. You, they sign off, they have a form.
No, but site plan review is a formal process.
I think it's a specific request. If they can determine based upon that hearing, what are the number of legal parking spots contained on that site?
They have some knowledge, they can participate in the conversation just to assist the town engineer. You're not gonna get a site plan review from them, you're not gonna get approval from them, but I think they bring a lot of value to the discussion. That's all I'm saying is, let's bring them in, because we can't have this keep coming back here. We don't address, whether this is a viable option or not, because we really, I don't think we have the right people addressing it. And when it comes back, if it comes back it's not, then, then it is what it is, and they're not gonna get the approval. But let's not keep on going back and forth, back and forth on this. Let's, let's get the right answers, because this was provided, this certified stand plan, and there are spaces right in the right-of-way, so this discussion should have happened a couple of years ago. And, you know, we owe it to our residents in that area, and we also owe it to the Del Breccos that we do the right thing.
This was considered, this was submitted at the last application, not this one here. So, this was submitted last time, it was considered, same issues in relation to which ones were legal, which ones were, which were in the right-of-way, which one, you know, that all came, came out previously.
Okay.
As I said, this is...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I've never... This was submitted at the last, last application.
I know it was submitted, but, you know, when Mr. Del Brecko would come in and said he had twenty-four spots, I assumed, I just assumed that everybody was in agreement with that. And then I kind of got the sense, based on the police department's report and a few others, that this isn't true, so. Is this, is this a certified? This is not a certified plan.
That's an engineer report, not the town's, that's sort of what a parking spot is.
Thank you.
So, consensus is to table it for two weeks, get those questions answered.
Yeah.
Board members, all agree?
And I would encourage all the residents to come back in two weeks and make sure your voice is heard.
Public care explodes.
Yeah, they can still come and attend the meeting, I'm not saying...
The public care explodes. I just don't want them to leave here thinking in two weeks, public care is still...
I'm glad you clarified it, but I still think it's something...
Everyone's welcome to attend. Thank you all for coming this evening. I think you can see from a board's perspective, it's a very delicate, sensitive issue for everyone, so, thank you all for coming.
It's one of the best control meetings I've ever convened in this state of state.
It was all duty our effort, and I appreciate that. Come back and do it, can you come back every yard? Every night we have a meeting.
You can take one. I just need to be able to get some...
Contact them.
Thank you.
What did you, honestly, what's the, what did you...
We're all the restaurants out there.
That was one of the ones we talked about.
Right, and I didn't, I said that wasn't done properly, and I thought there should have been a public hearing on it, and the residents should have been notified, and they weren't properly notified at the time.
I'll answer you a question related to this.
Yeah, come on over here.
Let you all talk.
I think I've seen someone's back there.
Update.
Mr. James.
Get our mic.
You want to meet with the town engineer?
We'll meet with the town engineer.
And I don't think it would be bad on your part to actually get a chair to be on your behalf, advocate for you, and, you know, I know it costs you a little bit of money, but...
Doesn't cost anything to go talk to them.
Yeah, it doesn't cost anything to go talk to them.
Yeah, they were yours.
That's it, okay.
I thought you were talking about...
We're trying to, trying to...
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, I'm not bringing it up.
That's what it comes down to?
This is one of those issues that there's no...
I want to hit the rest of them.
Take a five-minute...
Yeah.
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me. I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
I asked you, I was...
They set already to me.
Call the meeting back to order. I know we have some residents from Oakdale Road here that like to be heard. We have a veterans agent here who has wishes for us to read the proclamation. We're going to do that so she can go back home, so she's back bright and early tomorrow morning, and we're going to take care of that issue first, and we're gonna hear from the fine residents of Oakdale Road. So, moving to item seven, proclamation, Veterans Day.
Do you have it?
I have it.
You have to make a motion first.
Sure, right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim November eleventh, twenty thirteen, as Veterans Day, and to read the attached proclamation.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Better than UN Day. It was easier.
Town of North Reading, Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas, on Veterans Day, America becomes one in honoring our veterans to commemorate their legacy of honor, pride, courage, and sacrifice, that they have upheld and safeguarded the very principles this nation was founded. And whereas, the selflessness of our warriors today is unmatched, they emulate our forefathers in continuing to carry on the values and traditions that were instilled through the generations. And whereas, on this day, we take time to reflect and pray for our warriors who have sacrificed the ultimate, continue to keep them, their families, in your prayers. For those warriors held captive and missing in action, may their fate, is still unknown, continue to pray for their safe return in peace for their loved ones. And whereas, we thank the families of our veterans and warriors for the sacrifices they have made. They work hard to maintain normalcy within the family unit while their loved one is in harm's way. They live with the fear of the unknown each day while their warrior continues to face the adversities of war. And whereas, we must continue to educate our young through involvement in action, the importance of honor, respect, and appreciation for the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and warriors. And now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Selectment of the Town of North Reading, that all citizens, citizens observe the eleventh day of November, two thousand and thirteen, the appropriate ceremony and prayer in honor of our veterans and warriors whose steadfast desire was and is through valor and sacrifice to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. We encourage you to continue to display the American flag with pride on your homes, offices, and town buildings. Signed, Sean T. Delaney, Chairman, Board of Selectment. And I wish to thank the veterans who are here. I know we have a couple veterans in the audience, you know... I know we have a couple of veterans in the audience, so thank you to you and all the other veterans at home. Yes. November 11, next Monday, we have our veteran services. Susan, would you like to get up and tell folks the time and location?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. I invite Susan Magna, our Veterans Agent.
Eleven o'clock sharp is when the ceremonies begin. We have our guest, Esteban, her is Seth Moulton, former Marine. He's out of sale. And we have the community corral group coming in to sing as well. I have Jill Plord. She's a senior out of the high school. She's going to be emceeing the programs for us. Kind of started that because I just think it's really important to get them involved, and then I can do my running around in the meantime and make sure everything's running good. So, the Girl Scouts are going to be involved as well, the Boy Scouts. We have the Marine Corps Color Guard coming in, National Guard coming in with 10 warriors as well as four vehicles. We got toys and trinkets for the kids, coloring for the kids, and what we'll do is have them color. And then we'll bring, get those over to the hospitals, to the veterans, since there are a lot of soldiers are coming back now, and there's a lot of downsiding of setting out packages and that. We have the high school band as well coming, and Senator Tarr is expected, as well as State Representative Brad Jones. So, it's going to be a full day. Patriot Guard riders will be there as usual. And yeah, we got a full boat coming on, and I'm assuming I may see all you gentlemen there as well.
You forgot the speech from the Honorable Mr. Frisco.
Yes, Mr. Frisco will be taking care of that end of it, as I was advised today. So, I thank you. And yeah, we're looking for a good day. I'm just praying for a nice sunny, blue-sky day. And yes, we do have a sound, we do have a sound system, and plenty of food.
On the hill.
Horseshoe again.
All right.
Horseshoe, heavenly donuts, the Girl Scouts. We're all going to be baking and everything, so we'll be good to go.
Susan, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
We're going to jump down to item 10, which is public comment. I know that we have residents from Oakdale Road who like to get up to speak as to what has gone on in a particular empty lot up in their property recently. Board members sent you, I believe, on Sunday photographs I had taken of the lot up there, which is in, I would say, disgraceful condition. It's become a tent city, for those that don't know. It's an empty lot. It has tops, it has plywood attached to the tops. It looks like someone's setting up a camp. Most recently, on Sunday, I observed a small trailer, two old televisions, a washing machine, and most disturbing was, it looked like a oil tank was just...
It's become a dump. What it's become, it's like...
Mr. Martini, would you like to get up and to the podium? Think you want to maybe take charge?
Yeah, you're on camera. You probably need an agent. See yourself right there.
I'm a member of SAG, by the way.
Did you bring any books?
I get no books, no. I know you're red, Sean.
I know, you're an author.
His father's one of my heroes. I didn't mean to say that. I used to call him a...
Oh, don't, don't encourage him. Don't. He doesn't need any encouragement. No, if you could, no. There's, you know, I would say, becoming a blight on your neck of the woods up there.
Yeah, and like, like, my wife, Lisa, and everyone here, they walk up and down the land all the time, and they pick up every day.
This is Robert Martini, Oakdale Road.
Robert Martini, 59, Oakdale Road.
Sat there for three hours and didn't follow instructions.
Listen, and I was hot.
I know.
I was real hot.
But, uh... When did it start? What, about a month ago, Donnie? Month and a half?
Right after.
Don Schimack, 57.
Don, come on up. I think you may have more of the details.
Come on up, we'll talk together. Come on.
Speak and go here and thoughts.
He needs help. I don't know if you guys saw the pictures.
We did.
I did, yeah. I thought they were a joke. I thought it was, I thought it was going to be one of those comical things when I started going through it and then...
It looked like...
About a month ago, and it looked like they were just clearing some of the trees, and were going to, you know, take them out of there, and then all of a sudden a trailer showed up with a bunch of construction debris. And then there was a bathtub, and then there's...
I missed that.
Well, that's gone now. That's gone. So, it's like it's a transfer station for building debris. It was, it was proposed to be a build, a house that was not accepted because it's 75 feet from the wetlands, and now we've got oil tanks that we're concerned about, you know, leakage into the, into the wetlands, and it's unsightly, too. So, that's our main, our main concern. We have to drive by that every, every day.
There's going to be 80 sheets of four-by-eight in there, too. You know, they try to put up a wall up, and we're like, what are they doing? Because it looks like, we had fireplaces going on at night with no water.
Fire department showing up twice to put out fires, because there's no, they have no...
Did you want to say that?
That's all I wanted to say.
Why? She said it for her, she didn't let her speak.
I didn't say, it wasn't me, it's Donnie.
So, I know, I got a call, a couple of calls regarding the fires that started a few weeks ago. Was it two or one or two?
I know of two.
Two, yeah, we, Friday night and another night.
They don't have any running water to be able to contain any fire that gets out of hand, so...
It's just a couple of young kids, but then the guy that owns it, I seen him talking to him a couple of times, the heavy guy, what's his name?
Ferris.
Ferris. So, I seen him talking with him one day, but I, I just drive by because I don't want no confrontations. I'd rather just call...
You listen to your wife.
Wow, after how many years?
History.
Thirty, thirty, forty years. Let's get older, I'm weak now.
But basically, it's a business, even if it's accepted, it's a business in a residential area. And it's a dump.
There's no legitimate business there. I believe the town administrator was going to give the board an update this evening anyhow, but speaking to Mr. Martini, we said, oh, I encourage you to come in, bring you folks in. I know, in speaking to the town administrator, as of almost two weeks ago, the building inspector had issued a cease and desist order. Am I correct, Mr. Valiakos?
Yep.
In that he had X number of days to clean up the lot. Am I correct?
It's seven, seven days to cease and desist and clean up the lot. Seven days, the seventh day was today. So, I spoke...
So, the oil tanks, yes.
So, what the letter serves is the, letter serves under the bylaws as a warning, so there's no infractions as a result of the warning. However, beginning tomorrow, he's subject to a $50 fine. The building inspector will be out tomorrow and inspect the premises. If there's not, there'll be a fine that'll be issued. If it's not cleaned up the next day, then he's subject to a $100 fine, and thereafter, correct, and thereafter, he's subject to a $200 a day per a fine for not compliance. So, that's the track that we would, we would follow. Obviously, if he fails to comply, then the town is prepared. We go file a court order. We have a hearing before, show cause hearing before a magistrate, and the magistrate comes down with a letter or the law on the individual. So, as I reported to, to the chairman, we're on top of it in terms of the calendar and in being aware of what's going on. We do know the individual, he's been in CS before in other projects and everything. I have not spoke to him personally. He knows how to reach me if he's got any concerns. I would anticipate that he will comply. If he does not comply, then it'll be subject to the fines that I've already stated.
Okay. And Peter on the streets said they're supposed to put trees in there, replace, because he's taking them out now, when they were supposed to put some more in. I don't know if that's...
I don't know about him. He doesn't have, there's no building permit for that particular parcel. However, typically, tree removal is associated with a building permit, and if he's in proximity to wetlands, that creates a whole host of other concerns. So, that's something that we, we would look at, but suffice to say that we're on top of the situation, and we know that the residents are concerned, we want to be able to do the right thing. So, he's been served, he's claimed his letter, the seventh day is today. Tomorrow, we go out there, we'll do an inspection. If it hasn't been complied with, the fine will be issued.
Thank you very much.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we send the conservation agent out, too, just to do a site visitation.
Sure.
To see if there's been any disruption within the buffers of the wetland. And, you know, just as, just as an aside, you know, Mr. Ferris was in here just a few months ago looking for us to sell a piece of town-owned land, which is across the street from this particular parcel. The board opted not to do so. He was looking to build a, a single-family home with, I believe, four bedrooms. I think the property would support a two-bedroom home at this particular point in time, and the board decided that it wasn't in the best interest of the neighborhood or the community at this particular time to sell it to Mr. Ferris. I hope this is not an act of retaliation on his part. I just hope that it's due to ignorance of bylaws and proper usage of the property at this particular point in time, but, you know, what he's doing up in the neighborhood is unacceptable, and I think we need to do, we need to follow through to the fullest extent. If he's supposed to be silly enough to, to test us, we should be more than willing to push back appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, moving swiftly along, back to proclamations. Pancreatic cancer awareness month, Mr. Foley. Mr. Chairman, I move to proclaim November 2013 as pancreatic cancer awareness month and to read the attached proclamation.
Second.
The motion is second. No further discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation. Whereas, in 2013, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 38,460 will die from the disease. Whereas, pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States. It is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. Whereas, when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis, while 94% pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas, approximately 910 deaths will occur in Massachusetts in 2013. Whereas, the incidence and death rate for pancreatic cancer are increasing, and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second-leading cause of cancer death in the U.S. by 2020. Whereas, the U.S. Congress passed the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop scientific frameworks or strategic plans for pancreatic can, cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to move, to make true progress against these diseases. Whereas, it'll be very difficult to leverage the opportunities that come out of the scientific framework developed as a result of the Recalcitrant Cancer Research Act unless sustained and adequate funding is provided to the National Institutes of Health and National Cancer. Whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in Millbury and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research, funding, patient services, and public awareness and education related to the developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic. Whereas, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in Belmont support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. Whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of North Reading are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Selectment designate the month of November 2013 as pancreatic cancer awareness month in the Town of North Reading. Signed, Sean T. Delaney, Chairman, Board of Selectment. Moving to item eight, minutes from the October 7, 2013 regular session. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October 7, 2013 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Two minutes. Moving now to item nine, legal bills for September.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve legal bills for September 2013 in the amount of $7,453.38 as follows. Copeland and Page, PC General, $7,309.38. Copeland and Page, PC Labor, $144. Furman Gregory, the Tula, $6,603. For a total of $14,056.38.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving along to item 11, appointments, cultural council.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place the nomination of the following name for appointment as member of the cultural council for a term to expire on December 31, 2015. Stephanie Baker, 80, Parker Road, number 36, Cambridge, Mass.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mr. Chairman.
I spoke to Mrs. Baker. She is living in Cambridge. However, she's been on, a member of the cultural council, and more recently, she, even though she's not now an associate member, is participating in a number of their programs. And she's, her folks live in North Reading, and she's living in Cambridge because of some education and job-related. But she's interested in getting back on the cultural council, and I had a discussion with her, and I am recommending that we appointment.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Town Administrator's report.
Good evening. Moving through my report, the board will note that the Mass DOT has sent a letter denying the heavy vehicle truck exclusion. It's incorrectly worded. It stated that there was a 24-hour exclusion. In fact, we applied for a nighttime exclusion, not a 24-hour exclusion. However, the reasons are stated that the alternate route is 15 miles in length, and the Mass DOT has ruled that that's excessive and would shift a disproportionate burden on the trucking industry in the area. And then further, that the proposed alternate route passes through multiple towns, and the Town of Reading was not in favor of the proposed alternative. So, at this point, we're standing by the fact that the exclusion has been denied by Mass DOT.
Mr. Matty, if I can just ask a question. Did anyone from the town follow up with DOT regarding the issue that they address as a 24-hour exclusion? Clarify that?
Yeah, it was a typo. It was a form letter that had been, been migrated over, and they're clear that, in fact, we had applied for, we had no time that we ever applied for a 24-hour exclusion. We'll ask them to send a clarification on that, because this is, this is unfortunately worded.
Right. I think if they say, send a corrective letter indicating that they deny what we had requested, I'd be more satisfied. Thank you.
On the matter of the town versus ROC Construction, which was for the unpaid police details associated with the Walgreens project, that is, litigation is nearly at its end. You'll see a summary from Town Council that he's provided indicating that the town has an opportunity to collect upwards of $25,000, which represents the cost of unpaid details and legal costs. And Councils also filed a complaint for trouble damages. Remains to be seen whether we will collect any of those monies, but what we wish to do is get the judgment from the court that in fact supports those actions. So, that is the sole remaining plaintiff, excuse me, defendant in this case, is ROC Construction and Mr. Rocco Izzo. Questions about that? Great. The annual tax classification hearing for fiscal year 2014 is scheduled two weeks from today. So, I would, I've asked the Board of Assessors to prepare a presentation, as they always do, and they, they will do so and have a copy of it in your packet. One of the things that, that I would like to discuss is, just to go over some revisions since the last time we looked at the town's revenues and expenses, as were approved by both the June and October town meetings, and I've got a handout here, and I'd like to go through it with the board. So, the good news is that under the new growth, you'll note that we have an increase of 303, 400, $303,494. So, the total in new growth is 628,454. And as I previously indicated to the board, that came about as a result of a one-time gain in personal property tax for a business in town. Business did not file the proper paperwork with the state, and therefore... Business did not file the proper paperwork with the state, and therefore their manufacturing exemption was null and void. So as a result of that, they had a personal property that became subject to taxation. We had conversations with them. They do not object to this amount, but this is a one-time, one-year gain. We anticipate a year from now, or excuse me, on January 1, 2015, they'll in fact file the proper paperwork, and these personal property tax revenues will no longer be available. So the recommendations in terms of how we would handle that, and I would first ask you to turn to page two. The only numbers that have changed are the ones in the red. The first suggestion is, the recommendation would be to increase the reserve for abatements and exemptions, and that's otherwise known as the overlay account. And the proposal was to increase that by the sum of $100,000 to $425,000. The reason why I'm recommending that we do so is, as you know, the town is in the process of revow, and so we anticipate that there will be increased requests for abatements when the period for filing becomes available. As an example, the last time we did a revow, which was fiscal year 2011, and the amount that was budgeted in the overlay at that time was $386,327. So the request would be to cover possible abatements and set aside the sum of $425,000 for that purpose. It does not require any vote of town meeting. The overlay account is subject to approval under the recap sheet. The other items that we've done here is we've looked at our motor, our local receipts. In keeping with the conservative budgeting practices that have been employed here, what we did is we looked to lower our estimated receipts across the board, starting with motor vehicle excise tax, penalties and interest, and so forth. So what was done, and what I am proposing, is that we bring the motor vehicle excise tax down to $2 million. You recall that when we had town meeting four weeks ago, we indicated that this amount would increase to $2,988,000. Okay? So what we're looking to do is we can balance the budget with $2 million in revenues for motor vehicle excise tax. All of the other amounts have been proportionally reduced to utilize the available revenues as a result of the new growth. None of it will require a vote of town meeting, but again, what it will do is it will give us the opportunity to bring in additional revenues, which may be certified and used as free cash a year from now. And so that's what the recommendation would be, is that we make these necessary revisions on the tax rate recap sheet, and these are the numbers that we would propose, unless the board has any particular questions going forward for the recap hearing in two weeks.
Just the, the reductions in red, and the increase for the overlay does not add up to the 303. So the rest would be, what, later on certified as free cash?
I'm sorry, Steve, I missed that.
All your reductions in red here.
Right.
Plus the extra $100,000 to the overlay reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Does not equal 303.
It's about $190,000 difference.
There's a couple hundred thousand bucks. So there's another $100,000 out there, and the plan for that is to just, what, for free cash?
Yes.
Well, either way, it's going to end up in free cash.
Right. Just an analysis of the whole amount.
Not spent revenue, whether it's.
I know, but just that it didn't reconcile fully. That's all.
But, no, what, no, I think.
No, no, wait. It does, because what's not shown here, and there's one piece that's missing, Steve.
Okay.
The, the amount that we had budgeted for motor vehicle excise tax at October town meeting was $2,098,762.
Okay, so that's the ninety-eight, that's out of a thousand bucks.
So, so that doesn't show up anywhere on this sheet, but you'll remember, we raised, we increased that amount because we needed to balance our budget for October town meeting. And the new growth figure was not certified at that time. So that doesn't show up on this sheet.
Okay. But if it had, then.
But if it had, there's, there's the $100,000 right there.
Right, okay.
All right. So again, the practice is conservative, and we think it suits the town well going forward to continue to employ conservative budgeting practices on local receipts. The economy is still precarious, revenues are still precarious, and it only benefits the town in the long run to bring in additional revenues that it does not spend.
Can you repeat again, what was the original number we had budgeted for motor vehicle excise tax?
Two million ninety-eight.
How come it's not on here?
Two million ninety-eight.
Yeah. What, what happened was, we went in, we went into.
Two million ninety-eight.
Yeah, two million oh ninety-eight, seven sixty-two.
So that should replace the two million eleven thousand, seven seventy?
No, I think the only thing that's missing here is next to the two million in red should have been reduced by whatever.
That would show eleven thousand, seven seven dollars, but really.
Right.
So yeah, under fiscal year fourteen budget, it should be two oh nine eight, seven six two, instead of two oh one one, seven seven.
And, and we did that because of the fact that October town meeting, we didn't feel that we had sufficient revenues to balance the budget. That's why we increased the motor vehicle excise tax. It turns out, we don't need to do that because of the one-time revenues coming in from personal property tax.
No, but in this, in this column, it probably should have reflected two oh nine.
I agree, Steve.
Yeah, that's all.
I agree. It certainly would have made, it would have made it more clear, and then you said you could have carried that number over in the writing column.
Okay.
One time, good news.
It is good news.
Okay.
Library trustees want to come in and meet with you at your next meeting in two weeks. You'll recall when they were here several months ago, they talked about two things. One was the increase of hours associated with the change of population. The second thing they talked about was increasing the hours of one of their positions. I believe it was the circulation librarian, who serves in the role of an administrative assistant to Elena Minton. At that time, it was requested that those discussions be deferred for fiscal year 2015. The trustees want to be respectful and come into the board and reintroduce those concepts at the next meeting.
For within the current fiscal year?
No.
No, no, for the next fiscal year.
Two thousand fifteen. The fire truck, new fire pumper truck, has been ordered. The, the amount was $485,000, which was approved by town meeting. The bid that we received was $462,739. The vehicle will be ready on the short end, eight months, so about mid to late May, and on the long end, it would be available in about ten months, so sometime in July. And this would, this was the request that would have been approved at town meeting a year ago. We're putting together a bid specification on the fire pumper truck is not that easy of a task. So I'm happy to report that we did get favorable results, and we do have a signed contract with the vehicle due about mid-May at this point.
With all the bells and whistles.
With all the bells and whistles is correct. Public building safety and security, we've been continuing to meet with the safety committee. Happy to report that we have completed training with our town hall employees. We are also proceeding with training for the library employees in the senior center, dealing with emergencies and safety and security issues, so that's progressing. And then the last item I have to report on is the capital improvement planning committee did meet last week, and the capital budget forms have already gone out and been distributed to department heads, due back sometime right around Christmas time. So they've already gone out to everyone, and the good news is that we will begin our meeting process in earnest beginning in January. Thank you.
Over to me, business. Mr. O'Leary?
I have a few items. First of all, I started on kind of sad notes. Just acknowledged some losses to the community and families in the community this, this past week. It's been a, been a tough week for the town. First of all, Joan Scott, many of you may have known Joan was a lifelong resident of North Reading and a fixture here in town for years. She was especially beloved and active at the senior center, where she generously shared her, her sense of humor, her kindness and generosity, generous spirit with all of her friends there. Truly going to be a loss for people senior center and her family here in North Reading. Fran McGee, who was one of the founding members and past president of our historical antiquarian society, passed away this week, and through her efforts and the efforts of a lot of other people over the years, we certainly have a terrific collection of past heritage here in North Reading, and no small pride and thanks to Fran and to Ellen, her daughter, and her son, our condolences. Anna Alouisi, greatest claim to fame, mother of seven. She and her husband raised seven children here in North Reading, seventeen grandchildren. But Anna played host, hostess to a lot of people in this community over the years, fed a lot of people, a lot of kids, and helped guide a lot of kids in the right direction. And her family married into some pretty good people who served this community well as public servants too. So to Mike Omario, her husband, and her children, our condolences. Paul Perry, thirty-two years principal at the Hood School. Tremendous contributor, contributed to the community, had a significant influence on so many kids and families throughout the community. Again, untimely death of Paul, and again, when he retired, at one point, they established a scholarship in his name for the CSF, where, you know, he put up $5,000 own money, and then his, also the parents and, and staff that worked there immediately grew to over $10,000, a great, terrific member of this, of the community here, and a tremendous loss to his family, our condolences. And our condolences should go out to Captain Nash and firefighter Nash, and the loss of their mother and grandmother, Dorothy Nash, there just this past week too. Enough of the sad stuff.
The last one, I didn't know that.
Just, again, I've been busy the last couple of weeks, been in and out of town, haven't been able to attend things that I normally would like to. One of them, of course, was the 25th anniversary of the Hillview, but to George Stack, and the current commissioner is, you know, doing a great job of carrying forward. You know, I spent twelve years on the commission with Mr. Messeri, and, you know, I've been in various different capacities for the community and public service. The Hillview Commission is a great place to serve, only because you can have an idea, you can bring it forward for consideration, and see it come to fruition rather quickly, so to speak, as opposed to some of the other ideas we try and kick around here for years, and it takes a lot longer to get things done. So Hillview is alive and well, ongoing strong, and under the stewardship of a lot of good people, continues to be a tremendous asset for this community, and continues to reinvest. Twenty-five years went by very quickly. With my first year on the board here, the acquisition took place and went by quickly. But a lot has been done, and congratulations to them. To the fall teams, we have at least three of them going to tournament play. Congratulations to them, and again, they've, they've worked hard, and let's hope that they have tremendous success. And one final note, I'd like to, my mother just enjoyed another birthday, so happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Foley? I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Messeri?
Steve went through the sadness, which I was prepared to do, so just pass on it. With the exception of Mr. Perry, who was the principal when I was on the school committee, and I, I remember one meeting with the principals, and they're sitting around the table reviewing the budget. Mr. Perry's library budget was double that of all the other schools, and me being a little bit of a wise guy on the committee at the time, I was younger then, a lot younger, I said, "I don't understand why you need library at all, because they've got this new invention, you know? You put this thing on the kid's head, and you press a button, and the entire contents of a book is absorbed." And I waited for a reaction from any one of the principals, and there was none. He was an interesting guy, and he certainly served the town well in the capacity. He, he had the more modern high, more modern approach to elementary school back then. That was one of the things that was going on, and it was the conservative bachelor of the school approach, and it was interesting, interesting group of people at that time. With respect to the rest of the individuals that certainly contributed, I pass, you know, my condolences to their families. Now I've lost my train of thought. It'll come back to me, I'll pass it.
We'll give you a second opportunity.
Mr. Valencio, the chairperson of the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, Danielle Solomon. So she submitted.
Daniel.
Danielle, sorry, Danielle.
Danielle.
Dan.
I'm sorry.
Daniel.
Oh, it's Danielle?
Dan Solomon.
Oh, Dan Solomon, sorry. Are we, am I supposed to take the action to replace them, or what's taking place?
Could you tell me what you have in front of you? I do not have that document.
Oh, I have a letter from you, says the, after sixteen, oh, it's from him actually addressed to you. It was put in my inbox, so it's the first time I've seen it. "After sixteen years as the chair of the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, I regret to state that the press of work and other commitments compel my resignation effective immediately."
What we do is we post a notice. We'll also notify the transcript to post a notice. As we solicit applications, they come in, we'll forward those on to you as the liaison to the committee, so that you can review them and come back to the board with recommendation.
Sixteen years, quite, quite a commitment. Be nice if maybe we could get a letter over to Danielle, thank her for the sixteen years. If there's anything I need to do, let me know. Let's see, strategic planning. What's the game plan?
That's why I asked you to bring calendars with you this evening.
Okay, so we'll do that at the end, okay?
You can do that after, offline after.
All right, and that's it. So.
Back to Mr. Messeri.
Go ahead. It was strategic.
Oh, okay.
Because I talked to you about that.
I know we mentioned briefly, a brief meeting we had two weeks ago, Mr. Messeri and I were the only two here, we mentioned the Hillview event. I too wish to send my congratulations to past members of the Hillview Commission, the current members of the Hillview Commission. It's a, it's a crown jewel of this community, that golf course, and one of its spawned as a result, whether it's turf field, the torture of a park, and, and the other eras in town that it has financed. And also that day, there was a nice history put together, and I send kudos to Miss Gloria Mastrow. She's put together a four or five-page history of the Hillview Country Club. So if anyone wishes, that doesn't have it, that wishes to read up on the history of the Hillview Country Club, feel free to contact me, and I'd be able to provide you with a copy. I enjoyed reading it. I was glad I was able to attend the event on that Sunday. Well-attended.
Before you go on, with respect to the Hillview, you know, one of the things that maybe the citizens lose sight of is that the revenue of the Hillview Commission, the bulk of it has been spent on increasing the capital assets of the town.
That's right.
And those assets continue to grow in value.
It was a, I'd have to say probably, probably the best decision this town has made, if you think back, certainly a decision like that has been made since I've been sitting on this board, and it's.
The way that it was originally designed, to set it up as an enterprise fund, so that the revenue from the course, and if you look at other municipalities with municipal golf courses, they're generally operating on loss, and a lot of the, a lot of the times, the revenue that's generated, it funnels back into the general operating budget of the community. It was specifically designed back then not to do that, and to allow it to, first of all, pay itself off, without any taxpayer dollars, and then reinvest in the community. You know, as Bob said, some capital assets which just continue to grow and increase the value, you know, not just of the physical assets that have been purchased, but again, quality of life in, in the town. And it's, it was designed and set up magnificently, and this uses as a model in other communities, setting up enterprise funds. So it's worked well for us. Let's keep it going.
My last item, I, I know there's a great deal of interest in town concerning the issues surrounding secondary school building project in particular, in relation to the appeal to the ZBA by two of the Butters. So I just want to give a little update concerning what the building committee has done. Back in September, this board encouraged the building committee to try to come to a settlement with the two of Butters, and Mr. Messeri, and Mr. Fody, and met the Butters. What the building committee decided to do, although its consensus still is, the best course of action would be to wait about a year to decide to do anything, as we're looking at the entire project, which includes the renovation of the middle school, which is going to stop. which is going to start taking place next summer, and give some growth to the berm in the back area of the project. In any event, taking the urging of this, the majority of this board and other respected members of the community, the building committee, back in September, September twenty-four, had, in conjunction with the landscape architect, had taken a look at the landscaping project for the entire complex, and had considered at that point moving fifty-two trees from various locations on the current landscaping plan to the rear of the berm. And then, that was discussed with the abutters at a November twenty-fourth meeting. And following that, the landscape architect took a closer look at the project and came back and suggested we could actually consider putting seventy-seven trees on the backside of the berm. Building committee scheduled a special meeting on October first to deal with this particular issue. And at that point in time, the building committee voted unanimously to recommend a proposal that would include seventy-seven trees to be located to the backside of the berm in full settlement of the claims that the abutters have pertaining to the special permit that was issued by the CPC. There was an additional meeting on October eighth of the secondary school building committee. To the surprise and dismay of the secondary school building committee members, none of the abutters had appeared. And then, on or about October fifteenth, the abutters through council submitted their counterproposal through Mr. Messeri, then made its way through the building committee. Their proposal was to take out seventy-seven trees and add thirty trees to the backside of the berm. So, we came into the ZBA hearing that was held on, the dates are right, on the seventeenth of... Oh, I'm sorry, let me add a couple of things. They wished to have thirty trees. In addition to the additional thirty trees, and they had specified what type of trees they wanted, the height and so forth. They also wish for us to put seagrass on the berm instead of the meadow mix. Both the landscape architect for the project, as well as Wayne Hardacre weighed in concerning the seagrass issue. The landscape architect had commented back that the cost expense of the seagrass would far exceed the meadow mix. Wayne Hardacre, who has some familiarity with the maintenance and the upkeep of the seagrass, because of the seagrass that's planted in and around the area of the bachelor of the school, commented that it's quite expensive to maintain seagrass, because he knows what it takes just to maintain the area at the bachelor of the school, which is a relatively small area compared to the size of the area of the berm. In addition to that, too, the trees that were requested by the abutters, the additional thirty trees, were of such a height that the landscape architect had recommended that they would not be suitable. Certain types would not be suitable planting in the area of the berm, and others would not be suitable to be planting in this area at all, whether it's on the berm or not. So, we went into the ZBA hearing on the seventeenth of October. It was chaired by Joe Keys, as Mr. Powell there has recused himself, he's an abutter up on Tower Hill Road. And Mr. Keys went down this avenue where he was, seemed at first he was trying to suggest that we should take a height off the berm. We had pointed out that we had earlier expressed that a site contractor had estimated that to take between five to ten feet of height off the berm, it would cost the project between eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars. Following that, without, in the consensus of the building committee, without considering what we had proposed and what the abutters had counter-proposed, Mr. Keys went down this avenue of suggesting that we should put a full-foot berm on one abutters' property, a full-foot berm on the other abutters' property, and plant trees on their property to screen the berm and the schools. What was pointed out at that point in time to Mr. Keys, that that's outside the scope of the building project, that contractually, I believe, was feasible to do. And then, it also entail reengineering the swale area, the stormwater runoff, in relation there to, and the concerns that the building committee would have about going on to private property to do any work. So, there was a whole multitude of concerns that were expressed. And it seemed quite obvious to the members of the building committee that were present at the ZBA that the ZBA led by Mr. Keys was, looked like they were going down an avenue where this was going to be extremely costly to the building committee if a decision was issued by the ZBA. So, in a further effort, following that meeting to reach a settlement, the building committee voted to... As it seemed like what came out of that meeting was that the abutters wanted to put trees on their property. So, following that meeting, through Don Keller, a member of the building committee, he had proposed that we offer twenty thousand dollars, which is essentially the cost of those trees, the seventy-seven trees that we considered placing on the backside of the berm. That we would offer that to the abutters as a lump sum settlement, and they could take the twenty thousand, divide it however they wished, we were getting involved, and they can spend it accordingly in their individual backyard to do what they wanted to do for screening. That was then taken, voted on by the building committee, voted on it. That was a split vote, but it was favorable to propose the twenty thousand. That was done about a week after it was proposed. Through the council, the abutters returned a counterproposal, and the counterproposal included taking the seventy-seven trees, the seagrass, and their request is now an additional forty-five thousand dollars. So, because the building committee meetings and the ZBA meetings are not publicly televised, although reported very well in the transcript, I just wanted to give an update as to where we stand presently with that issue. And it's to a person on the building committee, we'd like to get this issue behind us. There's a meeting tomorrow night at five-thirty. I expect it to be well-attended. And the building, the ZBA has closed their public hearing. They're going to debate and discuss this issue at the next ZBA hearing, which I believe is, we meet again today, the fourth we meet again, not the eighteenth?
Eighteenth, yeah.
I believe it's.
Twenty-first.
Mr. Charles, I'm going to call upon you.
Twenty-first.
Is it the twenty-first, or is it the week prior? For some reason, I think it's the.
Twenty-first.
For some reason, I think it's in the teens, though.
That'll be fourteenth.
I think it, I think it could be the fourteenth.
It is the fourteenth at seven-thirty.
I believe it's the fourteenth. The ZBA is meeting on the fourteenth. So, I just wanted to publicly give an update as to where we stand in the efforts made by the building committee to try to resolve this issue. Thank you. That's all I have this evening. Mr.?
I feel compelled that I have to make one little comment, because I attended that ZBA hearing. And whether, doesn't matter what side you are on regarding this issue. I felt embarrassed of how that meeting was run. It was the most unprofessional meeting I've ever been to. And I would hope that somehow, maybe through Mr. O'Leary, some counseling gets back to Mr. Keys and the rest of the ZBA members. You know, they don't have to like comments that are provided back and forth in the exchange. To be shouting and to bring it to a level of unprofessionalism is completely unnecessary. And I really hope on the fourteenth, it's handled with a higher level of professionalism than it was that evening. I was embarrassed, I would say, and I'm going to have some serious concerns as we go forward, having these individuals on that ZPA, the way things were handled. Inappropriate. I just wanted it to be noted.
I will convey the concerns, and I spoke with Mr. Messeri offline in relation to what transpired. Again, I was out of town, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but as liaison, I will convey the message. But in relation to the individuals who serve on the ZBA, they're all long-serving members, associate members and members. Never been an issue prior that I've been aware of, and I've been a liaison for a long time. Never any complaints, so whatever occurred, I'm sure, well, it may not be a good excuse. I'm sure going forward, it can be handled much more professionally. And again, it's fortunate that the issue was before them in the first place, you know?
Not disagree.
Hope that that could have been avoided, and something could have been taken care of long before that ever occurred, and hopefully some settlement could have been. But if it wasn't for this board stepping in when we did, I thought we had a shot at making some progress, and I thought we were pretty close. So, it's unfortunate that we weren't able to reach a settlement agreement with the abutters. But unfortunately, now the ZBA can only react to the appeal this before them in relation to the two abutters that filed the appeal. And I thought the proposal that was put forth by the secondary school building committee would have helped, did help address not just those abutters' concerns, but other abutters also. But the ZBA isn't at liberty necessarily to address those issues specifically, unfortunately. So, it's too bad. I hope that there are continued negotiations and then suggestions. While the public hearing is closed, you know, if there is some sort of agreement that's reached, maybe that can be shared prior to their written decision. I will convey the concerns expressed.
The only other point that I'd like to make, and I've forgotten it, but there's still a misconception in the community. In fact, Mr. Keys had stated during the hearing that the building committee, through the project team, actually went on private property cut-downs. That was not done, so I don't know how much clearer I can be that the trees that were cleared were cleared off of what is town or school property. The only trees that were taken down on private property were done by a private contractor, which the building committee paid for at the cost of excess of five thousand dollars, that there were trees that three abutters felt as though were weakened or put in a weaker state as a result of the tree removal of the school property. So, as a gesture of good neighbors, the school building committee allocated, we was in excess, somewhere around five thousand dollars to have those trees removed, so that any concern that they had, they got weakened trees on their property, they're taking care of. So, once again, the building committee or project team did not go on the private property, remove any trees. So, I hope we can put that to bed, because it seems that it's been out there for nearly a year now. And it's disturbing that the miscommunication is out there. That's all I have. With that, I will call for motion to adjourn, and then we can discuss dates for our strategic.
Second.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye. We never pick the date for a strategic plan.
So, we can do that offline.
Oh, okay.
Do you listen?
I do.